Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 27th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. And tonight, we're very blessed to have Dr. Kevin Head, the Senior Pastor at First Baptist Roseville to lead us in the invocation, followed by Officer JP Davis from Precinct 5 to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So those who will enable, please stand.
Let us pray. Good and gracious Creator, we are grateful for this evening and for the privilege of being able to gather together in freedom in this great county, state, and nation. Compared to so many in this world, we are blessed people, free to pursue life as we choose, free to worship as we desire, free to serve others. We are indeed grateful for our freedom and for our many blessings. But even as we give thanks for our blessings, we'll remember that this community is not perfect. As good as life is, for many of us, problems and difficulties remain. There are those in our county who are anxious, concerned, and afraid. Some in our community have lost jobs and are emptying their life savings. Others suffer physically from disease and failing health. Some are impacted by drug abuse, addictions, and even domestic violence. And all of these experiences are now magnified by a worldwide pandemic and the greatest sense of political division any of us have ever experienced. In this dark world, we need light, we need grace and mercy for each other, we need love in our communities and in this great county. We ask for peace to replace anger, assurance to overcome fear and worry, and grace to look past our differences and to work for unity. Be with these county commissioners and leaders, bless them, empower them, grant them with wisdom, patience, and a keen sense to do what is best. Guide them to creative ways of dealing with the challenges that we face. And help them and all of us to know that even when we are prevented from doing great things, we can do small things in great ways. May each of these community leaders know of our appreciation for their service and leadership among us, and be with them as they seek to play service to our community above self, and bless their efforts. For it is in your holy name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just to, we have a full schedule tonight. For those that are in the Learning Center, just to reassure you that we haven't forgotten you, what we're doing for the first part of the meeting, the presentations, and we're trying to have as many people in this room for the presentations, and then we asked, after you got your presentation, if you'd like to go to the Learning Center to watch the rest of the program, we'd like you, we would ask you to do that, because those that are in the Learning Center, we're going to bring them in here for public comment. And that's so that we can comply with the COVID precautions to make sure that we keep everybody safe and healthy as much as possible, given this pandemic. So the very first presentation tonight is Commissioner Ott.
Could I ask the representatives of the Wright family to come forward? I'll stand over here and you guys stand over there. You won't be able to understand me if I leave the mask on. There's a story behind every one of them. So I have a proclamation here for a wonderful lady, and as I read it, you're going to see all the wonderful things that she did, and her husband, can't forget Elwood Wright. Jean Elizabeth Geiger was born in Atlanta on June 25th, or January 25th, 1924, and married Elwood Wright in 1946. Desiring to live in the country, the Wrights bought a 20-acre cotton farm in Marietta in 1948. They lived in a small cabin before building their home in 1952. As a conservationist, Jean worked diligently to restore her property to the forest it had once been. Her children have fond memories of riding in the family car around the metro area to rescue native plants that eventually made their way into the home garden. And whereas, in 1996, the Wrights placed their property under conservation easement, ensuring it would never be developed and would be used as an educational resource in perpetuity. Cobb County purchased the property in 2003. Using green space funds, it now serves our community as the Jean and Elwood Wright Environmental Education Center. And whereas, in addition to her conservation work, Jean volunteered for the Anna L. Haas Humane Society and the Cobb County Animal Shelter for more than 40 years. Known affectionately as the Puppy Lady, Jean's innovative satellite adoption centers throughout Cobb increased pet adoptions and decreased euthanasia rates at the shelter. She also faithfully served on the Cobb Animal Control Board for 15 years, from its inception in 1987 to 2002, and successfully led grassroots campaigns for two bond referrals, referenda for new animal services facilities. And whereas Cobb highlighted Jean's contributions by naming the animal shelter's Puppy Room in her honor, creating the Jean Wright Award, and appointing her as honorary member of the Animal Control Board. On March 11th, 2020, Jean Wright was the first woman from Cobb County to be inducted into the Georgia Women of Achievement Hall of Fame as a female trailblazer. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Jean Wright for her vision, passion, and commitment to enriching our community. Her trailblazing legacy will positively impact future generations and all those who visit the Jean and Elwood Wright Environmental Education Center. This, the 27th of October, 2020, signed by all the Commissioners. So I have two of these, one for the family, and then one for, I think Judy's here, for the center. So who gets to talk?
Thank you, Commissioner Ott, and thank you to all the, oh. Thank you, Commissioner Ott and all the other Commissioners, Chairman. I appreciate it. And I want to, special thanks to Judy Beard and to Thea Powell, who couldn't be here, because they're the ones that did all the work to get this approved. So thank you very much for that. And I know my mother would be happy about that the work she's done continues, she would be very embarrassed by this presentation, as I am too, but thank you all.
All right, we have to do a picture.
If I could ask Orin and Brenda Harris to join me, please?
I'd like to deliver this proclamation to you. Whereas, as many as one in six adults struggle with reading and writing, National Family Literacy Day was established by Congress in 1994 to highlight the importance of literacy and education for the entire family. It emphasizes the impact parents have on their children's learning. By becoming more proficient in these categories, individuals can gain self-respect and confidence and achieve goals that otherwise may not be obtainable. And whereas, families who read aloud to children from a young age build quality family time, develop early vocabulary skills, expand attention spans, improve listening skills, increase imagination and creativity, and open dialogues between parents and children. And whereas, November 1st, 2020, marks the 26th anniversary of National Family Literacy Day. This annual celebration features special activities and events that showcase how literacy programs empower families in building a nation of readers. Participants are encouraged to celebrate the joy of reading and read together as a family. Literacy programs across the United States will hold read-a-thons, book drives, workshops, and family activities at schools, libraries, and community centers. And whereas, the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, nonpolitical volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children and adults. Because education is one of the cornerstones of the organization, Kennesaw Mountain Chapter members are committed to increasing literacy by promoting and supporting literacy programs now. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2020, as National Family Literacy Day in Cobb County. We encourage residents to celebrate the joy of reading, especially together as a family. We also thank our hard-working librarians, educators, and literacy service providers for their tireless efforts to strengthen and enrich our community. This, the 27th day of October, 2020.
Thank you, we appreciate Cobb County Commission and Commission Chairman joining with us to promote National Family Literacy Day. I heard some statistics this summer from the Department of Corrections, and they said that 63% of children who are not read to in the home by the age of four will be incarcerated. It'll manifest in the third grade if a child in the third grade cannot read and write on a third grade level. They will become the class clown or a discipline problem, they will drop out of school, and they will be incarcerated. So we want to encourage families to read to their children and read together, turn off the TV, shut down the computers, and read together. And we do thank Cobb County for joining with us to put an emphasis on literacy. Thank you.
Now Commissioner Burl has two proclamations.
If I could have Amy Black join me, and anyone else that's with you is welcome to come up. Just you tonight? How are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good. So, how many of you know that November is National American Indian Heritage Month? Well, it is. So this is an extra one for you. So I'm going to read a proclamation for Amy and her group that are here. Y'all can come up if you want, or for the picture at the end, or whenever. Whereas, the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by Native American Indians and indigenous people. Sorry, I cannot say that word. Whereas, the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of the nation today. Their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of the rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas, Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August, 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas, in honor of National Native American Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities, have been planned. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November as National American Indian Heritage Month in Cobb County, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This, the 27th day of October, 2020.
Do you want to say a few words?
Thank you so much, we really appreciate the signing of the proclamation. Last year, we had the pleasure of two members from the Georgia Eastern Cherokee Tribe joining us here for a proclamation as well, Fulton and Monica Arrindale. They would have loved to have been here this year, but were not able to make it, so they extended their, you know, thanks and gratitude as well. If you're not familiar with American Indian culture, please take some time to familiarize yourself. The area that we live in is just rich in the history. They have made so many contributions to the country despite some of the trials that they endured. And there are typically plenty of events in November and throughout the year to celebrate their heritage through powwows, events at New Ochota Historic Site. This year has put a little bit of a damper on some of that, but hopefully, you know, those will be rescheduled in the spring. And there's typically also a festival in May, so any opportunity you get, I just encourage you, it's such a rich and lovely culture, to familiarize yourself a bit more with their heritage.
Thank you. And now we get a picture. And now I'd like to ask the veterans that are here tonight to come up. We're, November's also Veterans Month, November 11th being Veterans Day. And this fine group, we can never repay and owe a debt of gratitude for their service and for our freedoms. So tonight is, this is a very bittersweet night for me. It's my father's birthday, he's in heaven celebrating, but he would be 100 today. He was a World War II vet, Army, and North Carolina National Guard for 26 years. So thank you all for being here, you know I love you all. So, whereas, the sons and daughters of Cobb County have served in the military throughout wars and peacetime with bravery and honor. And whereas, our residents understand the costs of freedom, and all of Cobb's veterans are to be highly commended for their service, sacrifice, and devotion to duty during the most trying times in the world's history. And whereas, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of November, 1918, leaders signed an armistice ending World War I, and since that day plays such a significant part in our nation's heritage, November 11th of each year has been designated by Congress to be Veterans Day. And whereas, Veterans Day is a day to recognize and honor the veterans of World War I and millions who served our nation since that time, whose military service has had a profound effect on history. And it is a day to rededicate ourselves to Abraham Lincoln's call to care for him who shall have borne the battle, and for his widow and his orphan. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, recognize all veterans who fought, sacrificed, and struggled to protect the freedoms we enjoy today. The 27th day of October, 2020. God bless you all and thank you for your service. Chairman Boyce and Commissioner Ott are both veterans as well, so thank you. Does anybody want to say anything? General Bankers?
We go by rank.
I think our Army Nurse should speak. I don't think I should speak at all. I do want to thank you very much, Joanne. I want to thank Commissioner, my Commissioner, my old Commissioner, and I do want to thank our Chairman for your service. But I do want to give way, I was just a captain, I'd like to ask the General to speak for all of us.
First of all, I just want to say thank you, if I get this mask off without still being able to hear things. Just want to say thank you to all the veterans, our country. You are incredibly special people who have decided to step up when your country needs you most, and volunteer to serve the rest of us, and to secure our freedoms up to and including your life. It's incredible dedication that it takes to do that, and we recognize each and every one of you and all your organizations that support our veterans. But there's also another group of veterans that I'd like to talk about a little bit. Those are the ones that, I've got a lot of friends in this category, and they're the ones that have done their duty, they've come home, and when they come home, they don't feel, everything's changed, they don't feel welcome anymore, they don't feel comfortable at home, they don't feel valued. That group of people is who we need to reach, and I think that's, that's one of our missions is the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation, probably the most important. Reach many of these people that never get reached, but yet have done so much for our country and for each and every one of us. You see it in the suicide rates, the drug abuse rates at times, and a lot of times, you just see it in people that absolutely, after 50 years even, never basically come to terms with their service. It's happened so often, my first war, Vietnam, it happened so much to everybody, and we just don't ever want that to happen again. I want to thank each of the Cobb Commissioners also for your support of us in this endeavor, and I would just ask all of you, please, hug a veteran when you see them and tell them thank you. But beyond thank you, if they need help, ask them, and be a friend. Thank you.
Now, this one person here, who's the daughter of a veteran, who would be 100 years old today. He served in World War II. He was a wonderful man, and I want to thank his daughter for being so good to us veterans, and that's you, Joanne.
Thank you, I wish I spoke better. I'm the Commandant of the local Marine Corps League, named after Squire Skip Wells. Skip Wells was a young Marine who perished domestic terrorism five years ago, this past July, at Chattanooga, Tennessee. So I'm here kind of to represent all our fallen brothers and sisters. And as the General said, I had the honor of being called to give the eunuchie at a funeral this past Saturday for a 27-year-old Marine who was discharged from the reserves in 2016. I didn't not know the young man, I don't know the family. He passed away in Savannah, Georgia, the funeral was in Lilburn. Somehow, I skipped going to a meeting that morning and was called to go to the funeral home. I went, I spoke, and I thanked him, and thanked him and his family for their service, because it's the veterans who step up and make this country possible, make this meeting possible. And these gentlemen and ladies are the ones who do it with our wives, our families, and your support. Thank you.
Okay, now we need a picture.
You want us in the picture? Yes.
Y'all get in the front.
I'm shorter than you guys, I know that.
Okay, ready? I can see all of you. One, two, three. Thank you.
Who's got their next?
Commissioner, Chief, yes. Thank you, and now Commissioner Cupid has two proclamations.
If Dr. Doris Billups McClure can join me up front, I would greatly appreciate it. Do you have anyone with you who you're looking to join? I see, oh, I see a principal coming up to join you, surprise, surprise. Hey. It is with great pleasure that I'm here presenting this proclamation. Whereas, Dr. Doris Billups McClure devoted her career to improving the welfare and educational development of children. She retired this year after faithfully serving as the Principal of the Riverside Area Schools for 31 years. She helped open Riverside Elementary and Riverside Primary. And whereas, Billups McClure is recognized as a leader, not just in her school, but also within our community. She is a trailblazer as the first black woman principal in Cobb County Schools District. Under her excellent guidance, Riverside Primary exceeded many goals and was praised by former Governor Nathan Deal for the extraordinary academic achievements of its students. And whereas, each day, Billups McClure strives to improve the lives of our children through her positive words and actions. At a Community Stop the Violence Program, a young At a community Stop the Violence program, a young teenager asked why he should care when he sees parents and adults not caring. Billups McClure quickly responded with the powerful affirmation, "Because you are worthy." She also encouraged the young man and everyone there to continue dreaming big. And whereas Billups McClure is a Mableton resident who has influenced countless lives over her illustrious career, her retirement plans include continuing to serve our South Cobb community in a greater capacity. So therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby congratulate Dr. Doris Billups McClure on her retirement of more than three decades of faithful service as principal. We thank her for the tremendous impact she has had on Mableton, South Cobb, and Cobb County as a whole. This the 27th day of October 2020. Congratulations.
Hello, everybody, I'm Dr. Barbara Swinney, I'm the principal at the now Cityview Elementary School, which was Riverside Intermediate School, which is the school that Dr. Billups, I'm going to say founded. And I just appreciate her service over the years, she's mentored me, she's fussed at me and kicked my butt at times, but I just appreciate her for everything that she is because I owe a part of what I am to her.
To Commissioner Cupid, to Chairman Boyce, and other members of the Cobb County Commission, we want to take this opportunity to say thank you. I came to Cobb County June 28, 1990, and I recall signing my contract at that time. I didn't know Cobb, and Cobb did not know me, but it was my calling to be of service to the community, and service is what I did, and I will continue to serve the community in a greater capacity. Again, I want to thank you so much for this honor, it is one that I did not expect, and I don't know if I deserve it, but my parents always taught us to say thank you, she said people don't have to do anything for you, and when they do, you have an obligation to say thank you. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your service. You come in the middle? Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would love to call up those who are here for the next proclamation. I have Ms. Tasha Austin, the Office of Congressman David Scott here, the Georgia Vietnam Veterans Alliance, if you have a representative, please come forward, Dr. Michael Owens, and Donna This is one of those feel-good stories that we have at a time where we honor our veterans. As earlier this fall, we received a call from Ms. Tasha Austin in need of help, and when I read this proclamation to you, it'll become clear why we have this wonderful array of representation of our community here before us. This goes out to, again, the Office of Congressman David Scott, the Georgia Vietnam Veterans Alliance, Dr. Michael Owens, and again, Donna Rowe. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners thanks you for your efforts to honor the life of Wesley Duke Raymond Harris Jr. He proudly served in the U.S. Army from 1977 to 1985 in Missouri, Germany, and Korea. He enjoyed life, loved his family, was a devoted member of his church, where he mentored young males and attended every Sunday until his illness in 2015. Harris passed away on September 3, 2020, and days before his service, Harris's daughter learned she could not have him buried with the American flag because she did not have his DD-214 form. With several calls and emails to community leaders, including those who are here today, Harris was able to receive his wish of being buried with the flag in honor of his service, just within days or hours of his service. We thank all of you for your quick and selfless response to help family and friends pay their respects to their loved one, who has served our country bravely. Thank you so much. We have a presentation before us, but I'd like to give the mic over to Dr. Austin, and then we'll have a pretty special presentation for you.
So thank you, Commissioner Cupid, thank you, Board of Commissioners also, and I especially want to thank all of you, Ms. Donna Rowe, the Cobb County Veterans Association, Dr. Michael Owens, and of course, Congressman David Scott's office. Without any of you, this could not have happened. Unfortunately, veterans who don't have access to their DD-214 forms are not honored, and I just want to say with full appreciation and great appreciation, on behalf of my father, Mr. Wesley Raymond Harris Jr., thank you for honoring him as a veteran, and thank you for collectively coming together to ensure that as a veteran, he could be honored within the country for the service that he had to America. So thank you, thank you, thank you, on behalf of my father and my family, and of course, myself, because this could not and would not have happened without you. Thank you.
First, I want to thank Commissioner Cupid for sending an email to me and asking for help. On behalf of the Georgia Vietnam Vets, we are very proud of our children, because they've seen us through some good times and bad times, but you stood forward to represent your father. And as I told you earlier, us Vietnam Vets came home to a country that had turned against us. So we learned to step forward when another veteran or their family needed us. You are one of our children, and we are proud of you, and your daddy would be proud of you. So on behalf of the Georgia Vietnam Vets, the President has authorized me to give you our challenge coin, and I thank you for your honor to your father.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid. Thank you to other Commissioners, Chairman Boyce. So, thank you again, Commissioner Cupid, for reaching out on what was seen to be a such an ordinary day, but with a message that touched my heart. As a Marine Corps veteran and as someone who was a son of a Marine Corps veteran, I have personally been touched by trying to find records, looking for opportunities to prove, you know, my father's background and record and service that he had had, so that touched me a great deal when you reached out. And so I quickly made the phone call to Ms. Austin, and thank you for opening up, right, and being forthright with your story and what you're trying to accomplish. I'm happy we were able to secure not only the DD-214, but also the immediate documentation that was needed. So, I wanted to, on behalf of the Statish Report and pursuant to Service Members Civil Relief Act, I was able to secure a certificate from Michael Sorrento, who's the Director at the Department of Defense, that clearly states that the birthdate of July 1957, Wesley Harris, Wesley Raymond Harris Jr. was and will always be considered a member of the United States Army. So please accept this on behalf of myself, Commissioner Cupid, and everyone else, so you will always have documentation and prove that your father was an Army veteran and served his country with dignity. So, I'd like to present you with this. Thank you, not a problem.
Would any of you like to share some words? You're good? I'm going to share just a little bit here. I know Dr. Austin personally, and was saddened when I learned of her father's death, and she stepped up as the leader in her family to get everyone here from New York and to arrange a funeral for her father, who she's been helping to care for, who was in hospice for some time. And I'm just so grateful that everybody we contacted did all that they could do to step up to help honor the life of her father, which meant so much for her at a tough time in her life. But I also want to encourage all of you out there, that if you have any family members who have served, please do what you can to get the paperwork that will be needed to honor their service. For all that they've done, we want to make sure that they get the respect that's due, and that their loved ones don't have to grieve not only their loss, but not being able to fully honor their lives as well. So the form we talked about, some of you who may not know, is a DD-214 form, and I just can't strongly encourage you enough to make sure that you have that documentation. Thank you.
Before we take a picture, the certificates.
Okay. Next part of the meeting is a public hearing, proposed closure and abandonment of a street in Cobb County, so I believe that Erica Parrish and DOT will lead us in that hearing.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. We would like to ask that the Board consider a request to conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of Young Street, or portion of Young Street located in Land Lot 694 of the 17th District, 2nd Section of Cobb County, Georgia, determined that said right-of-way serves no substantial public purposes and authorize the disposition of same by quitclaim deed to the adjoining owner, West Village Associates.
Okay, so, before I open up this hearing, just to give you the guidelines, each speaker has three minutes, an unlimited number of speakers, and just let us know who you are and where you live in the county, or where you live in general, we'd appreciate that. So with that, I now declare this public hearing open for the proposed closure and abandonment of Young Street located in Land Lot 694 of the 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia. Would anyone like to speak to this issue? Would anyone like to speak to this issue? Hearing and seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed, and I turn the floor over to Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that the Board determines that Young Street serves no substantial public purpose and authorize the disposition of the same by quitclaim deed to the adjoining owner, West Village Associates LLC.
Okay, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I call a question, all in favor, please, raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, on to a public comment, Mr. Rowling, first six speakers, please. And the guidelines are, each speaker gets five minutes, please let us know who you are and where you live, we'd appreciate it. So with that, Mr. Rowling.
Yes, Chairman, the first speaker is Andrea Truitt.
Okay, and can I just make one admin note, please? You need to go to the county clerk, there you go, sir. I just want to make one admin note here, this is from Mr. Ross Cavett, who's the head of our communications. "We've worked hard to keep seating in our meeting rooms socially distant in accordance with public health recommendations. Our property management has taken on a rigorous cleaning regime to keep the room as sanitary as possible, and for those speaking at our podium tonight, there are clean wipes available for your use if you'd like an extra layer of protection while speaking at the Board." Okay? So with that, sir, you have the floor.
All right, good evening, everyone, excuse my voice. My name is Andre Truitt, I'm a resident of Fulton County. I would like to say good evening to everyone. I would like to say hello to Commissioner Mike Boyce, Commissioner Lisa Cupid, Cobb County officials, Cobb County residents, ladies and gentlemen. I am the proud father of Vincent DiMario Truitt. I want to ask you all today, in what world does a 17-year-old minor get shot multiple times in his back for running away? I would like everyone in this room with kids to ask themselves, what if this was my child? It has been over 100 days since my son was murdered. Me nor his mother has seen any body footage camera. Number one, I want the officer to be charged in this matter. Number two, I want Cobb County to be accountable and show transparency. Number three, we will not stop until there is justice for Vincent DiMario Truitt. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Monica Delancey, Riverside Community. I'm here to talk about the resources that's being provided by the agencies that you awarded the money to, the funds to. First of all, some of the feedback I've received on Home Savers Program, it's kind of cumbersome, a lot of paperwork, some cases, people have to submit their documents more than once, they have to go to like Office Depot and have them scanned in. I received a call from one person who did say that their mortgage, her mortgage, that she was awarded, approved, but she has yet seen the funds delivered to her mortgage company, okay? So, that is some of the issues we're hearing from Home Free. Star C, even though they have a better success rate with people that are being, receiving assistance, there are still some apartment complexes that are not taking Star C funds, which is, causes challenges for people who would qualify. And so I do know from conversations, with talking to other, you know, advocates, they are trying to, you know, talk with some of those apartment complexes to let them know how the Star C program is a benefit, so maybe we'll hear some of those apartment complexes who are not on board yet to get on board receiving Star C funds. Must Ministries is open to also providing assistance to homeowners and people who rent homes and apartment complexes, and they open to everyone, you don't have to have a child to receive those funds. The only agency that requires you to have children under the age of 18 is the Central Family Resources. And the Central Family Resources in some areas provide a little bit more stability, because they help out with utilities as well, which is a benefit, to help stabilize our families. Let me also talk to you about the Eviction Prevention Committee that the We Thrive and Riverside Veterans Association formed. It is to help families not only to save them from eviction, it's also helped, we help families stabilize families and also stabilize communities. Earlier, we heard from the organization that helps with reading literacy. The fastest way for a child to take in what's going on in schools is to make sure their home environment is stable. home environment is stable, is stabilized. When a person have to leave their home by no fault on, it disrupts schools, it disrupts children. Even though some people could say, well, it shouldn't take you that long to find a place to move, it can't. Just last week, I was in court with a family that was, that was served eviction, not because they were laying their rent, was because the landlord wanted to exercise their right to terminate this person's lease because it says that. And all they did was give this person thirty days. Well, by the time she got to court, even the judge said, well, you don't need, you had enough time to find a place to live. Well, this person has challenges. This person does not make two and a half times the rent. This person barely brings home fourteen hundred dollars a month. This person does not have access to a moving company that's going to charge them less than five hundred dollars. So when someone says it shouldn't take you that long to move, it can't take you that long to move. They have to process it. This person just moved into this place in February. She was not expected to be moved out in six months just because in the lease, it says the landlord can exercise that right. So we have to think about the needs, not only of these resources. Yes, it is, she can get the resource to help pay a deposit, to help with a couple of months' rent, but who's going to help pay for that moving truck? Who's going to help pay for utilities? Who's going to help this person get stabilized in a new community? So therefore, when they have learned about the community, they become significantly engaged, then all of a sudden, they uproot it from that community. So when they get to that new community that approves them based on the situation, they may be leery about participating in the community because guess what? A landlord anytime could come and terminate the lease. They may not want to vote in the next community they move to because they don't know if they're going to be uprooted again. So we think about that. We go into the court system, the judge says, well, it shouldn't be that hard for them to move. It is hard. Think about a woman, a black woman with four children and make less than fourteen hundred dollars a month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Delancy.
Renee Oliver?
It's Rihanna. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rihanna Oliver. I'm going to be real straight and direct, to the point. My cousin Vincent DiMario Truitt was shot twice in the back over a hundred days ago. I just honestly want to know how many idiots with certificates and credentials it takes to investigate a shooting where a child was shot twice in the back. We're not asking for much, but for you to do your jobs, hold the officer accountable, charge him. Why is he still working? If none of you can tell me where a shooting to the back was justified ever, do your job. That's it. Do your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
Good evening to the Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Demone Horn. I reside in the state of Georgia. And as you've already heard from some family members, we're concerned about an investigation that's taken over a hundred days in the shooting of our son Vincent DiMario Truitt. It actually just appears as if nobody's concerned that this family can't even begin to heal until we know what happened. But I'm here to tell you a little bit about Vincent because I served as his godfather. And in case it's not very clear to some of you in the faith community, and especially in our culture, when you are honored to be named as a spiritual father to a child, that's because the parents feel that you can help them lead him down paths of righteousness. Vincent was not perfect, but as anyone in this room who's acquainted with the Christian faith may attest, none of us are righteous, are perfect. Vincent served his church. Vincent served his community. Vincent was raised and taught to be respectful. And probably on the night that he was shot in his back while he was running away, he was simply afraid. And so we are asking that somebody put an end to this roller coaster, this merry-go-round. Vincent's grandmother happens to be, and you'll hear from her a little later, one of the premier educators in the city of Atlanta. And she is afraid to go to sleep at night because she's afraid to have to wake up another day not knowing what happened to her grandson. And so I appeal to you at the very core of your morals. I heard you preacher in your prayer. All people deserve dignity. And we ask that you put an end to what looks like a cover-up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. How are you? I am the mother of seventeen-year-old Vincent DiMario Truitt. Back in July, one day before my birthday, my son was shot, not once, but twice in his back by a Cobb County police officer. Vincent has never known to be a violent person. He has no violent history whatsoever. He was such a happy person. He was the type of person to keep you laughing. He was the type of person to help you out in any way he could. Vincent was a proud member of Bullock Baptist Church. He was a pillar to his community. He volunteered with different organizations such as Jose Feed the Hungry. He volunteered during summer camp as a counselor to help the kids at the Police Athletic League. He was a star basketball player for the Police Athletic League. He played football and ran track for the Police Athletic League. He attended after-school programs for the Police Athletic League. He looked up to the officers that raised him since the age of eight. This officer stole his future, stole our future. My son had big dreams to become an entrepreneurship, finish his entrepreneurship. I'm sorry. He was just starting his own business designing clothes. He worked as a Georgia-certified soccer referee. He had just received his driver's license and planning on purchasing his first car with his very own hard-earned money. Vincent was a hero to his little siblings. His little brother is left to figure things out on his own, such as problems on how to fix the Playstation, or how to hit a backwards flip. His room is a feet away from his big brother, where his big brother once slept. Imagine how his nights feel. My whole world has been flipped upside down. I don't even feel human. Not only was my child shot to death, I found out via Instagram. I was escorted out of Grady Hospital after desperately searching for my minor child. Sitting outside of Grady helpless for hours, calling hospitals, calling the police precincts. After leaving a message with the Cobb County Police Department, finally a detective from the GBI called back to inform us he would meet us at Grady. He met us on the outside sidewalk of Grady to identify Vincent from a picture on his phone and to tell me my son did not make it. I was deprived of my baby's final moments. He laid on the hospital bed. The same hospital that claimed he was never there, cut open from surgery, fighting for his life alone as no one cared for him. And as you can see, he has plenty of love. Can you imagine screaming your child's name down the emergency room halls and the entire staff is telling you, your child's never been here? The whole while, my child was dead. I can't think straight since July fourteenth. I cry every night until my head hurts. I died with my son that day. The way this has impacted my life, I will never be the same. I sit at his gravesite every day of my life. It's the only place I feel peace. He took my gift away, my gift of being a mother to my son. The only thing I can do for him now is decorate a piece of land where his deteriorating body remains. Two statements that will haunt me forever. One from GBI Bain Rich, yes, this person in this picture is deceased. The other, my son's last words, why did you shoot me? I'm dying. We have yet been shown body nor dash cam of the incident. This happened in July. We approaching November. Am I just supposed to enjoy the holidays while waiting on to see what happened for my, to see what happened to my baby? Cook meals and open gifts as if my child's life didn't matter? This officer committed murder. He should be treated like any other civilian that commits murder. I'm not in the criminal justice field, but I've never heard a justifiable shooting in the back. We're asking that you release the tapes. Release the tapes. Show us what happened to my son. This officer kissed his kid's warm cheeks at night. He gets to continue working on a force that's supposed to serve and protect us. Where is my son's protection? At what point does someone take action and do, and do what's right? When it's one of your kids? I can't shoot someone in the back and go to work tomorrow. Why should he? I won't stop until justice is served. My son was murdered running away. If you run from a dog, do you deserve to be bit? I want this officer fired and prosecuted to the full extent of the law. I want the tapes released. Release the tapes. I want justice for seventeen-year-old Vincent DiMario Truitt.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Latoya Oliver. I am Vincent DiMario Truitt's cousin. On July thirteenth, he was shot by a Cobb County police officer. He died the next afternoon on July fourteenth. You cannot imagine the journey that this family has been on. I could have never imagined in a million years that this would be what my family is experiencing, that we would feel this movement so personally. We have been sympathetic, we have been empathetic while watching others go through the same journey all over the television, all over national news. This has touched home in our living room, and there are so many unanswered questions. Vincent has been catapulted into the spotlight, yet we have yet to hear the name of the officer who shot him twice in the back. Why hasn't the officer's name been released? I've read an article from Tribune Ledger News that stated the department completed their investigation and the officer had been returned to full duty. What were the results of this investigation that was mentioned in this article? Why weren't they made public? We have so many questions. Why was he transported multiple times without his parents being notified? He was seventeen years old. His mother found out the next night, not within hours, not within minutes. She found out the next night, hours after he had already expired, that her son was Who was supposed to contact this mother and let her know that her son had been shot? Not even that he was gone, that he had been shot. She never received that message until he was already gone. Who was responsible? Who dropped the ball? Can you honestly tell the public that procedures were followed? That this was done by the book? If you can, why did eighteen hours pass before she even knew? Why is the family still waiting for the completion of the GBI investigation? As has been stated over and over, this happened on July thirteenth, just before midnight. He died on July fourteenth at Grady Memorial Hospital. He was transported from the hospital to the coroner's office, where a day later, they performed their autopsy. His mother did not know until Tuesday night, hours before her birthday. Who dropped the ball? And why don't we know his name? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, that's the first six public speakers.
All right. We have a number of revisions tonight, tonight. I'm going to be calling for motions. First of all, as an admin note, we're going to move agenda, regular, item number thirty-five on the consent agenda to regular. And that issue involves the allocation of hotel mill till tax. So you'll see that in the regular agenda tonight. And also, I'm going to be making some motions here to add some, three items to the consent agenda. Make a motion that we approve the settlement of workers' compensation claim on behalf of Donald Rich. Have a second in discussion. Hearing none, I'll call a motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Also, make a motion to add the consent agenda to authorize a settlement of Cobb County versus Cumberland Mall LLC at Alia, civil action file number sixteen dash one dash five six three one, Cobb County Superior Court, pursuant to the direction and within the terms as discussed in executive session on October twenty-six, twenty twenty, and authorize counsel prepare and execute any necessary documents for the purposes of settling ongoing litigation. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a second in discussion. Hearing none, I call a motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. And I make a motion to add to the consent agenda to authorize settlement of Cobb County versus Cumberland Mall LLC at Alia, civil action file number sixteen dash one dash five six three three, Cobb County Superior Court, pursuant to the direction and within the terms as discussed in executive session on October twentieth, twenty twenty, and authorize counsel prepare and execute any necessary documents for the purposes of settling ongoing litigation. Have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Burrow?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Hearing none, I call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. All right. Give me one second here. I believe we have, I'm going to make a motion now to add to the regular agenda, two items. Make a motion to approve a two-part design bill contract with John W. Spratlin and Sun LLC, with initial phase to include only the design, project fee, and general conditions costs for the new police vehicle evidence building part of the two thousand sixteen's loss program, X ten forty-two. We have a second in discussion. Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. And I make a motion to add to the regular agenda, be tabbed number fifty-four, to authorize the repurposing of Cobb Public Health Cares, which stands for the Corona's Aid Relief and Economic Security Funds, previously approved by the Board of Commissioners and approve an additional allocation of cares funds to public, to Cobb Public Health for additional needs. Do we have a second? Have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. All right. So now I'm going to ask Brad to move, oh, he's been moving all along. All right. I'm not very good at multitasking tonight. So the, while he scrolls through the consent agenda here, I just want to bring to your attention that on item number thirty-three, that's been revised. that on item number thirty-three, that's been revised to authorize to carry forward of all the unspent fiscal year two thousand and twenty standard state mandate and designated reserve funds into the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one budget, and it's revised as the attachment posts. And are we good on the consent agenda? There you go. I knew there was one more somewhere. Okay, with that, I move to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Second discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Okay, I'd like the board's indulgence to move one, item number forty-nine to the first part of the regular agenda. We have a number of veterans here tonight that, what's the right word here, I don't get in trouble? Who have been here, who have spent long hours today, and I'd just like to recognize their service by moving this motion up to the first part of the agenda item as a small measure of our appreciation fully done for our country and their families and this county. So with that, Commissioner, Commissioner Burl. Okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to pass the motion to you, but who? Okay, we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Okay, and now with that, Mr. Geese. Peasant, Mr. Geese. Oh. Motion to approve? He'll be down here, it's not that far. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You still got it.
Let me catch my breath a second.
All right. Okay, it's all yours, Mr. Geese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Our park says one item for you tonight, and it's for the board to approve a memorandum, a memorandum of understanding with the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation to memorialize the relationship between the foundation and the county and the process by which the monument will be constructed and operated. And we have a short video for you to see real quick.
I always wanted to do something for my country, for the United States. And in nineteen forty-two, I found myself in the South Pacific.
I've always been proud to serve my country. And to be a veteran, I don't know that I would be the same individual today I would have been without being a veteran.
When you join the military, you take an oath. When your country calls, you're willing to raise your right hand and say, I'll go. Being a veteran puts you in a status to two percent that are willing to stand up and serve selflessly. And being a veteran, it is truly the honor of my life. It was an honor to serve my country.
I don't remember the flag much, other than in school, you know, the Pledge of Allegiance when I was growing up. But when I was eight years old and I went to my dad's funeral, the flag took on a whole new meaning. How can we not teach our children about the sacrifice in our country?
Isn't that the one we will never forget? I think, and that's the one thing that a lot of veterans are having issues with. They think they are forgotten. And so if we have this memorial, it'll help them a lot to know that they have gone far and beyond their duty, and we appreciate it.
You know, you don't want to forget, no matter what, good, bad, whatever, you don't want to forget.
Cobb County wants to recognize those people that served this county, this state, and this nation. And I think it's important for those veterans to see that appreciation in a monument style. Saying thank you was very important, and one way to say thank you is to make it permanent, and the memorial will be permanent.
We need to say thank you. We need to say thank you to veterans and their families. We want this memorial to mean that to every veteran. It doesn't happen very often that they hear thank you, and when they do hear it, it's something you don't have to do, but something we should do because of their service for us. After all, it is for everyone.
Democracy is not free. It comes with a price, and we need to be thankful and let people know, not only in the past that we thank them for their service or the present, but also future generations to come.
I think this way veterans don't think that they're forgotten. They see a memorial and they know what I've done has changed something or done something, and it's bigger, you know, than themselves.
The nice thing about mankind is he likes to remember things. And a monument would help him stimulate his memory. And if he stimulates it, it'll be good for the country. And he'll be a happy person. Happy people will serve and do marvelous for the world.
Thank you, Brad. Now that I've got my composure, I can talk a little bit better. Commissioners, this is, this has been a very rewarding process. Negotiating on behalf of the county, I've been myself, Pat Riley from the county attorney's office, and Bill Volkman, our comptroller. This is truly going to be one of the most beautiful monuments that I can ever remember seeing. It's going to, to me, it's going to be better than even what they can do in our nation's capital. This is going to be a beautiful piece of, of honorarium to our veterans. And this memorandum of understanding is the last piece of the puzzle that the foundation needs to go out and start raising funds for this memorial. A few of the specifics include, the term of the agreement is for ten years, with four ten-year renewable options. Cobb County procurement policies will be used in all of the construction of the monument. No bids will be solicited until appropriate funding is provided to the county by the foundation. This can either be the entire amount for the entire project or in phases, if, if we get to that point. Cobb County will own the memorial, therefore, we will do the maintenance and upkeep on that memorial. We already maintained that piece of land already, so that will not hurt our budget at all. Foundation, the foundation will have use of the memorial on Veterans Memorial and Independence Days, plus other requested days during the year. And then also, the foundation will conduct the vetting process by which the veterans' names will be placed on the memorial with review by the county. So Bill, Pat, and myself are here tonight, we'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. But first, we ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents. Commissioner Burl.
Well, this day has been a long time coming. And I can say that it has been an honor to work with the foundation committee and with staff, Jimmy, you, and Bill, and Pat Riley, bless his heart. Five years ago, I think in two thousand and fifteen, the county asked the Veterans Memorial Foundation to, to do this project. And now it will be a county park. It will be for all veterans of all branches of service, all wars, all peacetime. And it is gorgeous. You can see from the pictures and from the video that it will be a lasting honorable tribute to our veterans. So I am thrilled that we have gotten to the final piece of the puzzle, as Jimmy said. And I appreciate all the hard work and support to get us to this point. So with that, I make a motion to approve the MOU for the Veterans Memorial.
We have a second, Commissioner Ott, any discussion?
Thank you to all.
Hearing none, I'll call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jimmy, and thank you, veterans. Okay, now we can get back into sequence. Number thirty-eight, Dr. McMorris, and I believe, Mr. Volkman.
Sorry, Chairman, Commissioners? All right. Chairman, Commissioners, we are also glad to be near the home stretch with our cares. As you may recall, we've had a hundred and thirty-two million dollars that were, was given to us to address some of the COVID needs and the implications as a result of the virus. So we have several agenda items that are finally coming to a point where we can make some lasting decisions on what to do with the remaining funds. I'm going to be bringing a couple to you. So on this one, this is to authorize the reallocation of funding within the cares fund based on the recommendations resulting from the October twelfth updates during our work session from a lot of our sub recipients, as you may recall. So for a little bit of background, on the twelfth of October, the Board of Commissioners heard the presentations regarding the CARES Act funding and the status of expenditures from several, several of our sub recipients. Based on those discussions and their sharing with us the status of the, the funds expended and some of those funds that they plan to spend, we are coming back to you to have you allow us to share with you where we are with some of those funds. We looked very hard at what we could expend by thirty December, and we're very thankful that a lot of the sub recipients were upfront in saying that we just are not sure that we're going to be able to expend some of the funds that you already had given to them. So these adjustments will return a total of three point eight seven two million dollars to the CARES contingency fund and allocate an additional four point four eight oh million from the contingency fund. The net impact is a projected balance of about one point two million in the CARES contingency. The impact of that means that these reallocations will entirely be contained within the CARES fund and have no impact or net impact on ongoing long-term effects and other county funds. So with that, what we are asking the board to do is to take a look at all of those accounts and all of those departments that have returned monies. And what we are asking you tonight is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize the reallocation of funding within the CARES fund, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents. And I'll answer any questions that you all may have as a result of funding being returned.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion, so moved. All right, now discussion. Questions for the board? Commissioner Burl.
Yes, Jackie, what is the remaining balance in the, of the hundred and thirty-two, once everything's allocated?
So before we get to the others, or including what we're going to be considering tonight?
Including what we're considering tonight.
Okay, so if we.
Including everything that's potentially.
Okay. So if we're considering everything that's going to be potentially considered tonight, we're about one point one two million?
One point one two seven two ninety three fifty.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that I'm looking.
That's the light at the end of the tunnel so far. Now, we, we have discussed that there may be a few other items coming back.
Right.
Right, from other sub recipients, but right now, we're right at one point one million. Assuming the board approves these other two or three that I'm going to be talking about in just a minute.
Okay, so that includes the additional food assistance, the six hundred thousand, or no? Well, that's coming back.
That's coming back, yes, ma'am, that's going to come back on the tenth.
Okay.
So if you take that out of that, then you're about at a half a million.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
So the one point two, one point one two seven is where we are now with tonight's agenda. So the futures items coming back November tenth will be taken out of that?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the pot's getting lower and lower.
Which is a good thing.
Board still has to consider and approve.
We might not have any to send back, Kelly.
Let's not, let's not put the cart before the horse, that's still another two weeks off, so. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thanks, Commissioners. Okay, now number fifty-four.
We're going to fifty-four or thirty?
Um, the, the public health cares one.
Okay, so that is the one from the Health Department. This one, sir, is to authorize the repurposing of funding that was distributed to Cobb Douglas Public Health, as you may recall. And what we're asking for is for the board to consider a couple of additional asks by Ms. Crossman. So for a little bit of background, on the ninth of June, two thousand and twenty, the Board of Commissioners authorized an allocation of cares fund to Cobb Public Health in the amount of one point seven million dollars for supplies, equipment, some staffing expenses necessary to mitigate the spread of COVID-nineteen. Subsequently, Cobb Public Health was awarded additional federal and state funding for temporary staff positions that were part of the county's initial cares grant fund. So basically, what we're saying is that when we initially provided the money for Cobb Public Health, they had not yet received some additional funding that they subsequently received from the state and federal government. So with that, Ms. Crossman, during her presentation, came back and said, I too have some funds that I don't necessarily need from the county's coffers as a result of some other things or other monies that have come in. That said, that was about five hundred and ten thousand dollars. But she did say, however, I do have some additional expenditures that I would like to use that money for. So given that, she came back and we asked her to re-prioritize her ask, which was about seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So we said, take the five hundred and ten, re-prioritize it, and then tell us what additional funds you may need. Given that, she came back to us, and so Cobb Public Health has identified four items for the use of five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of cares fund. They are listed here in your agenda item, and I won't read them, and she has shared her explanation for the request of those funds, and as I understand it, you all are okay with that. So with that, I would ask that the Board of Commissioners authorize the repurposing of Cobb Public Health Cares Funds previously approved by the Board of Commissioners and approve an additional allocation in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars in funds to Cobb Public Health for additional needs. Authorize the corresponding documents and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved? Okay, discussion? Okay, I'd just like to say one thing. I think it's very important that we emphasize that Commissioner Ott here has been providing the board on a regular basis the status of the pandemic in the county. And whereas maybe five or six months ago, we were in the forest and we couldn't figure out how to get out of the forest, well, we're still in the forest, at least we know how to get out of it now. But the bottom line here is that this virus is. But the bottom line here is that this virus is still very contagious. It's still amongst us. We're seeing an increase in the number of cases, and I think it's important that we continue to provide support to our partners at public health with these important programs. This is a time where we all need to be joined at the hip, not just public health, but the Board, our healthcare providers, our educators throughout the county, that we walk together to try and find a way to get through this very, very, very serious pandemic. And I really support this effort in this agenda item in order for us to continue to make sure that we provide all the necessary capability to public health to help us through this pandemic. So with that, any other comments or questions? With that, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, now number 39.
Okay, so number 39. This is to approve a second amendment to the memorandum of understanding with Home Free USA as amended to revise the fee schedule and to allocate additional funds to provide rent relief for Cobb County tenants adversely affected also by COVID-19. Basically, in brief, what we have found is that, again, there is a great need for funding in the rental space for both Star C and Home Free. So what this agenda does, sir, is allow us to just amend the existing MOU with Home Free to address a specific point, and that is, in order to fairly compensate Home Free for additional applications processed but not awarded due to no fault of Home Free, as well as the uncertainty for the actual amount needed per tenant, it is proposed that the fee schedule be changed to a flat fee instead of what was previously in the MOU of the existing per grant basis provided for the full amount of the grant awarded. Compensation in the amount of $705,000, which was also in the original MOU, so we're not changing the amount, will be paid provided the full grant amount is expended, regardless of the number of applications required to be processed. If the full amount is not expended, Home Free shall be compensated in the amount of $300, same amount that was in the original MOU per application process, but not to exceed, again, the original $705,000. The remaining fee balance shall be paid in three payments following submission of the appropriate supporting documentation. So with that, I will ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the second amendment to the memorandum of understanding with Home Free USA as amended to revise the fee schedule, to allocate additional funds to provide rent relief for Cobb County tenants adversely impacted by COVID-19, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and authorize the chairman to execute the second amendment of the memorandum of understanding and any other necessary documents related to this particular agenda item. So moved?
Commissioner? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Number 40.
Dana. I didn't see Dana back there. Dana, do you want me to take this one or do you want to come and present this one?
Yeah, but thank you very much, Dana. I appreciate it. This one is to approve grants to qualified applicants for the not-for-profit grant program established for locally owned and operated not-for-profit businesses that were also adversely impacted by COVID-19 to improve unemployment numbers by providing cash grants subject to certain conditions. So you may recall that when the Board approved PPP for our small business grants, we later heard a request from our not-for-profit community, Commissioner Ott profited an agenda to bring PPP for our not-for-profit community. So on 28 July 2020, the Board of Commissioners authorized a fund balance appropriation in the amount of $2 million, as you may recall, from the 50 million that was appropriated to Select Cobb for our small businesses to assist in the PPP world of the not-for-profit community. So all received applications were reviewed by the Select Cobb team and the selection committee for potential funding. Of the 81 applicants, 68 are complete and approved. The attached list, which you all have received and reviewed, of qualified applications have been recommended for funding. So at this point, I ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the grants to qualified applicants for the not-for-profit grant program established for locally owned and operated not-for-profit businesses adversely impacted by COVID due to unemployment situations and cash grants subject to certain conditions, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents for said purpose, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I think you're getting Brad to put the list up. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, these are, there's not 3,200 of them, so I think we can put them up for those at home and those here to give you some idea of the broad spectrum of nonprofits that are benefiting from this program.
And, Mr. Chairman, while we're going through the list, I want to kind of relay a conversation I had last night with Congressman Brady from Texas. We were talking about Cares funding, and I told him what this board did together in giving $50 million to small businesses and not-for-profits. After he congratulated all of us, he was surprised and impressed because he told me this story about how in Texas, they're still trying to figure out what to do, at least in his area, with the 105 million that they got. And so he was, he was very excited to hear that this board stood up and to take care of our small business.
Did you offer a gap and give it to us?
I offered to show them how to do it. With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the list that's being displayed now and to approve the grants to qualified applicants for the not-for-profit grant program.
We have a second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, I call a question. All in favor, raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners. And thank you, Brad. Okay, now we're on to number 41.
Okay, so this one is to approve a second amendment to the memorandum of understanding with Star C. Basically, what we're doing here is allocating additional funds to provide rental assistance to low-income families living in qualified apartment communities in Cobb County who also have been adversely impacted by COVID-19. By way of background, on 26 May 2020, the Board of Commissioners authorized a fund balance appropriation in the amount of 1.5 million dollars to provide relief for Cobb County renters adversely infected by the virus. The maximum amount of the individual grant was up to $3,200, later amended to $4,850. During the updates on 12 October 2020, Star C provided that they also have seen an extraordinarily unfortunate need in additional assistance. During the update, Ms. Margie Stackmeyer mentioned that if there were available funds, she could use up to $918,000 just to process the applications that were in the queue waiting to be, to determine whether or not they could receive some funding as well. That being said, through September 30th, 2020, 509 families have been assisted for a total of $785,432. An additional 169 applications are pending payment or awaiting information from the tenant and/or the landlord. At the current application rate, it is anticipated that the original grant will be fully expended by early November. Star C anticipates that applications will increase slightly through the end of December with the funding remaining from the original grant and an increase of $850,000. Star C anticipates being able to assist approximately 520 additional families with rental assistance. Cobb County and Star C propose to amend their previously existing MOU to increase the contribution amount by $850,000 to total $2.3 million and also increase the professional services fee that they will receive to process those applications for a total of $188,000. So here tonight, I ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the second amendment to the original memorandum of understanding with the Star C Corporation to allocate additional funds to provide rental relief for low-income families living in qualified apartment communities in Cobb County who have been adversely impacted by COVID-19. I ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions, to authorize the chairman to execute the second amendment to the memorandum of understanding and any other documents necessary for said purpose.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. One of the things, and we heard from Monica earlier and in talking with Margie last night about this, one of the things that we have found over the course of going through this program, because we started back in May, as it has been successful, more of these landlords and apartment complexes have come on board, which is part of the reason why there is this request for additional money. Unfortunately, as we heard, not all have come on board, but Margie and Star C continue to go out into the community and try to get as many of these complexes on board. A lot of these applications are coming from the landlord in bulk. So we are having great success with the program, and so I make a motion to approve the second amendment to the memorandum of understanding with Star C Corporation to allocate additional funds to provide rent relief for low-income families living in qualified apartment communities in Cobb County adversely affected by COVID-19 and the part about authorizing the chairman to execute the documents.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners. All right, now number 42.
Okay, so home stretch here. Thank you, Chairman. This one is to redistribute grant funds for the small business grant program established for locally owned and operated small businesses with less than 100 employees who were also adversely impacted by COVID-19 to improve unemployment numbers by providing cash grants subject to certain conditions. By way of background, on 26 May, the Board of Commissioners authorized a fund balance appropriation in the amount of $50 million to support a PPP for our small businesses. As you also recall, 2 million of that was set aside for the not-for-profit organizations, which we just talked about. On July 21, 2020, the Board approved round one grants to 409 small businesses in an amount of $7.4 million. 13 October 2020, the Board approved round two grants to more than 2,000 companies in an amount of $40 million, $40,521,000. During the process of contacting those businesses who did not qualify and those that were approved, it was brought to Select Cobb's attention that four additional businesses that should have received funds had inadvertently been omitted from receiving those funds. Those businesses and recommended grant amounts are prospects holding Inc. in the amount of $11,700, AllSpark Solutions as well, and in the amount of $20,000, Unique Touch and Design Consultant for two grand, Southeast Healthcare LLC in the amount of $11,500. So what we're doing in part is to make sure that we make them whole with what they should have received but were inadvertently left off for whatever reason, so we're trying to make that right. In addition, we're also asking you to consider that there are some funds that may be coming back because there were some businesses, ten to be exact, that either have gone out of business unfortunately or who have chosen to not accept those funds. I will not go through the names of those organizations, but Select Cobb proposes the Board approve grants to Prospect Holding Inc., AllSpark Solutions, Unique Touch and Design Consultant, and Southeast Healthcare LLC as listed above, and acknowledge the removal of 10 grantees or subgrantees in the amount of $102,000.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And just so the public are following along, with the money that is coming back from the 10 businesses that are not taking it, with the four businesses that are, there's a difference of about $55,000 to the, back into the Cares contingency fund. So with that, I make a motion to redistribute grant funds for the small business grant program established for locally owned and operated small businesses with less than 100 employees adversely affected by COVID-19 to improve unemployment numbers by providing cash grants subject to certain conditions as enumerated in the motion, in the agenda item.
We have a second? We have a second discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I think you're free.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, for all of your support with all of these changes. I'd also like to thank Dana Johnson with Select Cobb, and I would also like, and Stephanie, and I would also like to thank, I'm not sure if she's down here, but Debbie Blair, who has worked tirelessly on revisions of MOUs and also our finance director, Bill Volkman. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, the next one's number 43, Dr. Roberts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this agenda item is to reallocate unexpended funds from the initial $1 million that was allocated for food procurement, food storage, and food distribution. A total of $942,000 and $942,000 was expended by sub recipients, which is about 94%, and that leaves a total of about $57,000 that needs to be reallocated. And we are asking the Board to consider reallocating an equal portion to the 25 recipients that fully expended all of their grant allocations and that also fully expended their grant allocations and that it's an even portion throughout the reallocation. We are also proposing that the Board consider the expenditures be completed by December 1st with reimbursement of October, for the months of October and November. With that being said, just to give you a little bit of background, on May 12, the Board of Commissioners authorized a fund balance appropriation in the amount of $1 million. Proposals were accepted during the month of May, for a week from May 13 to May 20. There was a total of 33 recipients that were funded in the nonprofit fund food program, and 25 of those were fully expended their grant by the September 30 deadline. We are proposing to reallocate the remaining funding to those 25 recipients, and the funding has already been appropriated in the budget. And we are asking the Board to, the Board of Commissioners, to reallocate unexpended emergency food funding in the amount of $57,864.18 to authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute any necessary documents.
So moved? Second discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, and thank you for the great job you and your team are doing. Okay, not so fast. Mr. Volkman.
This is the agenda we moved from consent onto regular as it involves the allocation of hotel motel tax.
Yes, sir.
And just for, the reason we did this is so that we can make sure that we continue to support, you know, our commitment to open up transparency about the use of these funds. So with that, I'll let you carry the discussion, Mr. Volkman.
Thank you, Chairman. And just to refresh everybody's memory, this, the countywide 8% hotel motel tax is one of the many components that we use to fund the stadium's debt service. So as a part of the FY '20 budget, we budgeted $2.7 million to come from the hotel motel fund to the general fund to help supplement those debt service payments. And with one of the major causes or one of the major impacts on the pandemic, we saw a very steep decline in the hotel motel tax revenues. So with that being said, just to kind of put that in perspective, in FY '19, we collected countywide $17.6 million in the hotel motel tax. Now, again, that is shared and split between the gallery authority and the county. But in FY '20, due to COVID-19, those numbers fell to $10.8 million. So a significant decline of roughly 38%. And so what we were able to do is, without negatively impacting the general fund, and because of these lost revenues, we were able to supplement the debt service payments using the Cumberland Special Service District 2 funds. That way, we'd have no negative impact on the general fund for FY '20. And as part of our FY '21 budget, we continued that practice to move forward. So again, neither FY '20 or '21, the general fund will not be negatively impacted by the reduction of these revenues. And obviously, we hope things improve and turn around, and we're able to, again, continue to supplement hotel motel dollars instead of additional Cumberland Special Service District $2. So with that, I ask the Board to approve, the Board of Commissioners, to approve the reduction of the FY- the reduction of the FY '20 Hotel Motel Tax Fund adopted budget due to a decline in revenues related to COVID-19 pandemic, and further authorize the increase of the FY '20 inter-fund transfer from the Cumberland Special Service District Two Fund to the general fund to supplement the reduced hotel motel inter-fund transfer for the Cobb Mary Exhibit Hall Authority Revenue Bonds Series 2015, also known as the Stadium Bonds, debt service payments, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Comment, Commissioner Rott?
Yeah, you're a funny guy. No, I just think that, Bill, first off, I want to thank you for the good job in managing the finances with the stadium. But I also think that what it shows is that the plan that was put together, you know, there were some, there were some folks that said, what happens in a downturn? And so part of the reason that I wanted this pulled from consent was I wanted the public to see that there was a plan.
Yes, sir.
If there was a downturn. And as a result, that we've been able to fund our obligations without having a negative impact on the general fund.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right, Ms. Parish, I know you've been chomping at the bit to get up here, you know.
And only have five items tonight, so that's good. So our first item I would like to request the Board of Commissioners to consider is the determination that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA 32-3-4, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on four parcels on Butler Road sidewalks project, adopt resolutions and orders in the form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the county attorney's office, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second. We have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Our second item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Accelerate Construction LLC, savings to the project in the amount of $26,197.29 for drainage system repairs on Lost Mountain Lane.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the contract with Cloud One Paving Company, Inc., a no-cost time extension through July 31st of 2021 for roadway improvements on Riverview Road.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC, a no-cost time extension through March 31st, 2021, for operational improvements on Factory Shoals Road, which is Harmony Leland and Clay Elementary Schools projects, phase one.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. And our last item for consideration is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $80,000 for Discovery Boulevard sidewalks, approve a contract time extension through January 1st of 2021, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and authorize the chairman to execute, execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Barfield.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, county manager. Property manager has two items. Our first is to the Board of Commissioners authorize a general fund, fund balance appropriation to supplement the 2011 and 2016 SPOLOST funding for Switzer Library, and approve a contract with Garland DBS Incorporated in the amount of $1,597,058 for the installation of the new roof and restoration of exterior walls at 266 Roswell Street, Marietta. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
A motion to approve.
Second. We have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, our second item is the Board of Commissioners approve a two-part design bill contract with John W. Spratlin &amp; Son LLC with the initial phase contract amount of $198,450 to include only the design, project fee, and general condition cost for the new police vehicle evidence building to be located at 430 Commerce Drive, Marietta, part of the 2016 SPOLOST program X1042. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
A motion to approve, and...
I second it. Now you have a comment?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We skipped 51.
No, well, I, this was an add-on, okay? So we're gonna do 51 after I do this one.
Oh, okay. So a motion to approve, item number 53.
Yeah, I seconded it already. So any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, commissioners. Now 51, Mr. Chief Kreider. Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Good evening, Chairman, commissioners. Public safety has one item, and that's for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Croft &amp; Associates PC in the amount of $218,230 for architectural and engineering services related to the fire training facility located at 2109 Ballard Drive, Marietta. It's a 2016 SPOLOST project. Also asked that we, ask the chairman to authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
We have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
Pass this five to zero. Thank you, commissioners. Okay, second part of public comment, Mr. Rowling.
Yes, so there's four speakers that have signed up. The first one is Quana Leon.
Okay. And again, just a reminder, you have five minutes to speak. Please let us know who you are and where you live. And then there's Radix Protection. We have sanitizers up here if you want to wash down the speaker platform where you are. They may be in the back room there. Let's just give them time to come forward.
Quana Leon?
Are they, we got someone back to check and make sure they're not in the learning center?
Ross put back there to check.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
In the meantime, we'll look for Arthur Washington. Arthur Washington?
We have Quana Leon.
Okay.
I came this evening to show my sons what it means to be Black in America. When you can't catch a ride with your friends without asking, is this vehicle stolen? Who gave permission to drive? Or can, or you can get shot in the back like your friend Vincent Truitt at the age of 17. This is the country, they say you have the right to bear arms and still get killed like Philanjo Castile at the age of 32. This is the country where you can get killed for walking from the store like Trayvon Martin at the age of 17. So you better not wear your hoodies outside without me. Where it's hot outside, don't you dare play with water guns or play cops and robbers like Tamir Rice. At the age of 12, you can get killed because the police will kill you and never serve a day in jail. This is the same county where Greg Abbott said, remember, I'm sorry, Greg Abbott, remember we only kill Black people. Is that your policy, to shoot first and ask questions last? Show us the body cam. Give his mother the peace to let her know what to pay to her son. Justice for Vincent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Arthur Washington?
Good evening, leaders of Cobb County. My name is Arthur Washington, and I represent KIP Atlanta Collegiate High School, which is the institution of higher learning that Vincent Truitt attended during his years of Tulage. And I come to you all boldly, unapologetically, basing my questions in why. I want to know why there's a mother, there's a father, there are friends and family that still does not have answers for this young man losing his life. You know, when we were young, we were told that a picture is worth a thousand million words, but a video is that plus sum multiplied over and over and over again. We was also taught that when you have a video, it's used to review something that you missed. So we want to know, why haven't these videos been released so we can review what has been missed for this young man? Vincent Truitt was pursued down a dead end, but unfortunately, Vincent Truitt ended up being dead, and his life came to an end. This is not something that's acceptable. This is another question that I ask, why was a 17-year-old made an ancestor before me? I signed up to be a public servant, as a lot of us in this room did, and that's not something that I take lightly. So we are asking here, boldly, unapologetically, to release those tapes so these family members, parents can get the answers that they need. As I went back to the scene and I still saw Vincent Truitt's blood laying on that concrete, it planted something in my spirit to keep his voice on, because his blood is still fighting. His blood is still screaming. So please, let's do what's right, and let's get this family the answers that they need because this was a homicide. Even if the brutal fact is, we have to investigate a homicide from within. As a father of six, I have to answer these tough questions to my kids. Daddy, will I be killed? Daddy, can I be killed? I have to go back to the school and answer the question to Vincent Truitt's peers and say, hey, can this happen to me? It can happen to you, unfortunately. My last conversation with Vincent Truitt, he was excited about being an entrepreneur, and he was just high on life. And that's how I choose to remember him, is ironically that he spent so much time in PAL, Police Athletic League, but it was two bullets to the back that took his life from a police officer. Whereas a youth, he was told that that was his safe haven where he found joy. Let's please release the tapes. Thank you.
Deborah Howard?
I'm the one that cries all the time because I still miss Vincent, and I cannot get used to this new way of life without him. That was my first grandchild. My name is Deborah E. Howard. I grew up in the northwest section of Atlanta, Georgia. And unfortunately, I grew up at a time where if you were Black, you had no business going to Cobb County, you better stay away. And even more so now, I feel like maybe, maybe in some parts of Cobb County, are all police officers bad? No. We have good and bad in every profession, but unfortunately, the cover-up for this particular incident involving this officer is just sickening. So on behalf of the family of Vincent DiMario Truitt, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you and share with you. And as I've said many times before, I cannot encapsulate a child's life in three to four minutes. I won't even bother to do that. But I never thought that July 13th, 2020, would be the last night I would see my first grandchild alive. I have been sickened to the soul to hear the malicious, slanderous, inaccurate depiction of Vincent, many of which were reported within an hour of Vincent being shot by a Cobb County police officer. Of course, we don't expect to ever receive a public apology from the news reporters who embellish their stories, nor from the police chief who apparently decided to give his own invalidated opinion to the news media. In fact, you should never expect to receive an apology for falsely reported information. At best, you will probably hear only the three words we now know, which does not suffice. And while I'm on this subject, I would like to give my sincere appreciation to one reporter, Mr. Chris Jose, who has at least maintained journalistic integrity throughout this process. For those who don't know the truth about Vincent, I will tell you, yes, he was a child of God. He was raised, nurtured, and guided in both the Mosley Park and historic Van City communities, and was a member of the Beulah Baptist Church, having been baptized under the then pastor Reverend W. L. Cottrell Singer, and now currently serving as a member under Reverend Pastor George, Eric George Vickers. Vincent was a youth of AAA popularity. He demonstrated astonishing athletic ability. And although his stature was diminutive, he exuded a heart-over-height mentality about playing basketball. He always wanted to play the tallest players. He participated with the Police Athletic League from a young age. He became a certified soccer referee with the First Works Soccer Program at 16 years old. Contrary to unpopular belief, Vincent was not a malfunctioning misguided miscreant roaming the streets of Atlanta as some would have you to think, but rather, he was in pursuit of his life goals, obtaining his GED, looking forward to next February when he could register to vote, designing his own clothing line, even recording his own music. I have been told that the officer has been transferred to the homicide division, which I guess that that makes him an expert. I'm hurt, I'm disappointed, and yes, I am angry. My life will never be the same because of this callous, trigger-happy antics of a police officer who apparently sought to shoot down a child in cold blood without following protocol or procedures. Cobb County, you are hereby unnoticed. The eyes of this community, the state, the country, and ultimately, the world will look upon you in a manner of abhorrence because of your mendacious handling of this and other similar incidents at the hands of Cobb County law enforcement. Just as Vincent's blood still cries out from the concrete behind the warehouses on Riverside Parkway, this blood is now on your hands. Stop with the inferior decorating, trying to sweep this killing under the rug, hiding this criminal, and please do the right thing to make this family whole. And at my closing, I say his name, Vincent DiMario Truitt. Thank you.
Tahila Abdullah?
My name is Tahila Bent Uthman Abdullah. I am a teacher at KIP Atlanta Collegiate High School, the institution where I met my son, Vincent Truitt. I taught him when he was a freshman. As a freshman, I still remember looking into the audience, that was my classroom, and seeing his eyes full of potential and joy and wonder and childhood. I remember he got the most excited during our unit on rhetorical appeals and persuasion. I'm gonna channel Vincent's zeal around this topic and delineate my comments using the rhetorical appeals. First ethos, ethics, trust. We are taught that we should trust the police department. We are taught that they are here to protect and serve. We are taught that they are here to protect and serve. We are taught that we can trust them to follow protocol and procedures. My question is, if we know beyond a shadow of a doubt that Cobb County Police followed protocol with fidelity, then why not release the tapes? Let us see for ourselves. Pathos, emotion. I walked the route and ended where Vincent was murdered. His blood was still on the concrete. I could tell you that Vincent was a kind spirit, a kind soul. I could tell you that my daughter doesn't like very many people, she's the three-year-old, and she fell in love with Vincent the first time she met him. I could tell you that Vincent did not have a violent bone in his body. I could tell you that Vincent was loved and people believed in Vincent. And unfortunately, his potential has been stolen. Logos, logic. Let's look at the facts. Vincent was shot in the back at a dead end. Vincent was seventeen despite the media calling him a man, an adult. Facts, we don't have the tapes. I wish we had more facts. I wish we had more evidence. Kairos, timeliness. Where is the sense of urgency around this case? Why are we not treating this case as if a life was taken? Why does the family, the friends, the teachers have to wait months and months of agonizing pain before it is prioritized in Cobb County? We have lots of questions, many of which could be answered by viewing the footage. I walked that route. There was a plethora of surveillance cameras. Where's the footage? Vincent was loved. Vincent was cared for. What is Cobb County Police Department doing to train their officers against bias? What is the police department doing to ameliorate issues that are rooted in the fear of black boys? This is my charge. Release the tapes. Justice for Vincent Truitt. Thank you.
The board, that concludes the speakers this evening.
All right, I'll start with you, Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brad, I think you have a slide, right? Okay, so the first one is, I remember on Sunday, daylight savings time, fall back, otherwise you're going to end up at church early. You have an hour, you'll have an extra hour to reflect. Next slide. All right, this is about some of our heroes, the fire station. Fire Station Twenty, Lieutenant Jason Vale, firefighter Josh Frans, firefighter John Lample, and firefighter William Medhurst. Early in the morning, they were called out on a fire, and when they arrived at the house, the house was fully engaged with the fire coming out the roof. And they were told that there was a person inside. And so the firefighters went inside to the house. The person, the ceiling had fallen down on top of them and they were not going to get out of the house. And our firefighters risked their lives and went into the structure, brought the gentleman out in addition to multiple pets. And so the gentleman suffered some burns, but he lived. And so I just want to commend Lieutenant Jason Vale, firefighter Frans, firefighter Lample, and firefighter Medhurst for a job well done. Okay, that's their names. Save the date, November fifteenth through November twenty-first is GIS Day, week. It's going to be celebrated virtually. Next week's newsletter will have more of the details about it. And then also, Joanne, do you have a slide for the cybersecurity? Yeah, you just, no, it's fine. Also in the newsletter next week, we will have information about cybersecurity that has been put out by our IT department. Just kind of a reminder of those things that you need to do. I've noticed just in my own email that there are a lot of scams out there right now, saying that you purchase things that you didn't purchase and to contact this number or email this email. If you didn't buy it, don't respond to the email because that's how they get your data. So just remain safe. That's all I have.
Commissioner Cupid.
I guess due to the heaviness of the public comments tonight, I'm going to bypass my prepared presentations and just address those who came here tonight. As a mom and as a member of our community, I just want to show my deepest condolences to you for the loss of your family member. It takes a lot to gather oneself, to continue on with the tasks of each day and to continue with some sense of normalcy when you experience a great level of loss. And you did show yourself even beyond that in coming here today. And I know it took a lot to come before us, and I want to make sure that I acknowledge that, not only as a mom and a member of this community, but also as a commissioner. I don't believe I have the words to really recognize the weight on every side of this matter internally to the organization and to the family. I do believe that there are leaders within Cobb Police whose hearts go out to the family, just in my conversation. I want you to know that. I don't want you to walk away feeling that there are members of our police organization who are not troubled that a young life was lost here. Whether it be practice, protocol, or policy, there is a disconnect that keeps us, I won't say us, that keeps our police from being able to respond as you've requested. And at least from my conversation with some, it keeps them from wanting to respond as they would desire to. In speaking with Attorney Griggs, who called me regarding this matter, you know, he had a pointed question that I could not answer, was that if policy is what is causing this divide at a time that we're experiencing nationally, is it time to reassess that policy? And perhaps there is, because I know that when I've reached out to our police chief, when I reached out to our DA, and I sent a subsequent email to the GBI director, I didn't hear back from him, I can't understand myself why we have not been able to respond in the way that I think parties on all sides would like to respond. I can't understand it. As a sole commissioner, this is out of my ability to be able to respond to individually. Even having spoken to the mother, it's good to see you here today, and also I've spoken to the grandmother. But I do know that there are bodies within our metro area, our state, and even our country that are examining why our policies do not allow us to be more responsive in matters like this. It's sad that, as someone shared, we were empathetic to seeing these other situations play out and now that's at our feet and we're being called to act. And I think, I can't put, I can't speak for anyone else, so let me reframe. I want us to say, I think one of the most persistent, compelling requests tonight was to consider the humanity of this young man and to put ourselves in the position of his family. Regardless of how we justify or look at policy, if we cannot put ourselves in the framework of that policy, with how would we want to be treated? How would we want our family or loved one to be regarded? In any of our policies, then we've got to ask, you know, what's the purpose of this policy? Is it really having the impact that is truly desired? And so that's at least a very strong takeaway I have from it. But the strongest takeaway I have is acknowledging the fact that a family is grieving over a young man who is still very much loved. And I didn't want this night to go by without recognizing that and for you to know that if any heart up here was touched, it is certainly mine. And I am hoping that those that have the ability to respond, do so. I'm hoping that they see what will be broadcasted here today or tonight, and that they respond. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid. Commissioner Burrow.
Okay, we're a week away from November third. I think we'll all be glad when this day gets here. There are several drop-off locations for ballot boxes throughout the county, sixteen, and you have until seven PM on November third to put your ballots in the box. There's also early voting through Friday of this week at the locations, next slide, at these locations. There is no Saturday voting, the Saturday, and no Sunday voting or Monday. You have to go to your precinct on Election Day. And then we, thanks to our GIS, we have an app that you can check the waiting times, next slide. You can check the waiting times at the early voting locations throughout the county. And it'll tell you an approximate wait time, and from what I've heard, it's pretty accurate. So you can check the different locations and see who has a twenty-minute wait or an hour wait and take your pick. But please vote. Everybody, make sure you vote. Okay, we have Riding with the Blue Charity Poker Run to Benefit SWAT Santa, and this is a Community Affairs Christmas presented by Cobb Police. It's Sunday, November first, at Al Bishop Drive, twelve-twenty Al Bishop Drive. And there's more information on the flyer. You can register with Officer Grinnell Reyes at cobbcounty.org or Larry White at cobbcounty.org. It's a motorcycle run. And then we also have cool cars and cops that will be on display there too, Sunday, November first, at the Safety Village, twelve-twenty Al Bishop Drive. So come out and see all the cool cars. The Saturday also is Halloween, so these are some safety tips from the CDC website on how to safely trick-or-treat. Wear a mask, wash your hands, take hand sanitizer with you, and keep your distance. The Art Station at Mountain View is looking for photographers to showcase in their upcoming digital gallery, celebrating the lives and journeys of our veterans. The deadline for submission is this Friday, October thirtieth, and the online gallery will run November second through the thirteenth. You can submit up to four photos, and for more information, you can email artstationcobb@gmail.com or call 770-514-5930. Keep Cobb Beautiful is hosting this Saturday, a household hazardous waste collection at twenty-four thirty-five East West Connector in Austell. And there's different items that will be accepted, so all that old paint cans and pesticides that you have in your garage, used motor oil, batteries, things of that nature, you can turn in. There is a limit of ten gallons of paint per vehicle. And the Extension is selling poinsettias again this year, and there's an order form that you can purchase, red or white poinsettias are really pretty and a really good price for the size. And there's more information if you can go to the Extension website or cobbcounty.org and for more information to preorder and pick them up at the Extension office on South Cobb Drive. And then I also have a video that we're going to show, and this is just a reminder to stay updated with all of our newsletters every Friday. The Town Center CID and Alliance have created a video of the Noonday Creek Trail, which is really an asset in our county, but this portion is in District Three. And we wanted to just show this video, it's just a couple of minutes long. So thank you to Town Center. So thank you to Town Center. And I, too, would like to offer my condolences to the family of Vincent Troy.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Gambrell. I thought you said you were done.
He got it right. No, he...
I got it right.
He got it, he got it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, well, last weekend, we held our second annual Gambrell's Great Pumpkin Day event at Still Family Farm to raise money for Safe Path Children's Advocacy. This worthy local organization helps children who are victims of abuse, neglect, and trafficking. Special thanks to Stephanie and Leslie and the Still family for another successful Gambrell's Great Pumpkin Day event. Families enjoyed sitting by the fire pit and roasting s'mores, shopping for pumpkin souvenirs at the market, hay rides, and fun games, including Jenga, which was loaned by our Senior Services Department. I'd like to thank, uh, all of our constituents who brought donations of sanitizing wipes, masks, and cleaning products for Safe Path facilities. Thank you to our fire department and our Cobb County police officers, they were busy all day. I am proud to say we cleaned out two fire stations and the Safety Village of fire hats, and we still needed more. So thank you to those officers who spent the day out, um, interacting with the children, and educating them about what they do, and all the other groups who partnered with Safe Path to help protect our children in our community. Now, Mr. Chairman, if you'd give me a moment, please. As you know, our Diaz has been decorated with pumpkins, and I would like to thank all of the departments who participated in our Gambrell's Great Pumpkin Day contest to support Safe Path Children's Advocacy. All the pumpkins were submitted, were creative, original, and amazingly crafted. And these pumpkins helped raise an additional $400 for Safe Path. So thank you to our departments that participated. So it is with great honor that, um, I have two awards I'd like to give out. Our first-place winner will be receiving this, um, hand-blown, um, pumpkin that was made by, um... Lily's Glass Blowers in Smyrna, Georgia, uh, for this day. And so, um, with that, I would like to first announce our second-place winner, and if both of these departments can come up. Our second-place winner, uh, with donations that totaled $137, was Oscar the Grouch with Pet Worm Slimy, which was created by our Public Library Systems. And our winner, uh, the first, uh, Gambrell's Great Pumpkin Giving Contest, goes to Carl Fredrickson from the movie Up, created by our Senior Services. And I will say, it is great honor being the liaison commissioner to this group, because when I announced the contest, they got very competitive.
Rig. Stacked. I'm sure it's just a coincidence that Commissioner Gambrell is the liaison for Senior Services here. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Gambrell. You good?
I am good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I think in the interest of, uh, of tonight, first of all, I also want to express my condolences to the family. And with that, uh, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and then we're going to do our public hearing, okay? So with that...
Tonight's board meeting with administrative hearing. And the lawyer.
Chairman, if I will all introduce it, this is actually from our agenda item, agenda item number 52. And it's a recommendation with the Board of Commissioners, good at a due cause hearing regarding the occupation tax certificate number OCC 027788. And if I will, Chairman, if I can just kind of go through what our procedures are for a hearing. But directly before that, I've just handed out to you a motion that the licensee, 1290 Clothing Company LLC, through their counsel, Carrie Wiggins, who's here this evening, has made and provided to me earlier this afternoon, seeking a continuance of this hearing. And it'd be appropriate for the board to consider the motion at this time before we proceed any further.
Okay, Commissioner Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I have a copy of the motion to continue. To remind the board, this by code was required, the county was required to offer the hearing at the next scheduled meeting, which the county did. The attorneys asked for continuance, which the county said that we would do. So we then wanted to schedule it at the next meeting. We were informed by both councils that that was, they had a conflict. And so we have agreed to extend it to this point, which is a month out from when it would have been required to have under the code. There is also some question as to the county's cost. As the commissioners know, in open records requests, there is always a cost associated with the production of the documents. That has not been paid, as my understanding, it has not been paid, so the documents have not been given. So based on all those facts, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reject the motion to continue the administrative hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero.
And Chairman, if I will, the hearing that is being conducted tonight is under Section 78, the Business License Occupational Tax section, which shall follow under the procedures of Section 6147, references B, it's actually H. That, that code section says that all hearings shall be as informal as compatible with justice, and that the hearing shall be expedited and normally shall not exceed 30 minutes in length. The following procedures shall prevail. First is the charges and the specifications against the licensee, and a response as filed by the licensee shall be read. After that, the county representatives shall present evidence, and the licensee shall present his evidence with an opportunity for each party to present rebuttal evidence, examination and cross-examination of the witnesses, and interrogation by the Board of Commissioners is then allowed. No evidence shall be presented which is not relevant to the particular charges. At the conclusion of the evidence, each side will be allowed to provide a closing argument or summation of the evidence. The Board of Commissioners will then decide whether due cause exists to uphold the suspension of the occupation tax certificate business license, and whether due cause exists to revoke that license. All exhibits will be presented by a party must be submitted to and retained by the county clerk, who is sitting just to my left, over by the podium, for the record in this matter. With nothing else from the board, I'd ask, we could proceed with the, with the hearing. We would proceed with the business license attorney presenting the case.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Scott Berthold, on behalf of the Business License Division Supervisor, I'm here tonight to present the charges. As Mr. Rowling just indicated, 6-147H of the code requires that the charges be read. I have opposing counsel, I copied the charges, which they received a couple of months ago on September 8th, and to satisfy the condition there in the code, I'm going to read the charges. This is an outline of the grounds for the revocation of the business license, or actually the suspension of the business license. And if you find that any of these grounds are satisfied, then that results in the revocation of the license pursuant to Chapter 78. The grounds specified in the September 8th, 2020 suspension letter say, per Section 7845 of the Cobb County Code, your occupation tax certificate business license is suspended, and due cause to revoke the license exists on the following grounds. And there's three main sections, grounds under Section 78-45C2, 78-45C4, and 78-45C5. I'll go over the first set of grounds under C2. Due cause to suspend and revoke the license exists under Section 78-45C2 because, quote, applicant or licensee has supplied false information to the supervisor of the business license office, end quote. And the grounds stated there are numbered in four paragraphs. Paragraph one, your application states that the doing business as name would be 1290 Clothing. That information is false, that is false information, because the business at 1290 Johnson Ferry Road has never done business, or held itself out to the public as, quote unquote, 1290 Clothing. It is instead doing business as Tokyo Valentino. Two, the application form calls for a, quote, full detailed description of the business, end quote. You stated, quote, retail dash clothing, undergarments, shoes, games, cards, and other misk, end quote. That is not a full detailed description of the business, and supplies false information. According to the information you supplied to this office on August 28th, 2020, the top three categories of inventory at the store are lotions and lubes, end quotes, quote unquote, toys, and, quote, smoke products, end quote. These three categories constitute 70% of the store's inventory, and account for 78% of the cost of the store's inventory. But your application description of the business did not mention these categories at all. Additionally, the first three categories mentioned in your description were, quote, clothing, undergarments, shoes, end quote. But your store's only corresponding inventory category is lingerie, which is less than 14% of the store's inventory, and accounts for less than 10% of the cost of the store's inventory. Under C2, ground number three, as your application identifies Tamika Hugley as, quote, president slash managing member, end quote, of 1290 Clothing Co. LLC. That is false information, because Georgia Secretary of State records show Michael Scott Morrison as both the organizer and manager of the LLC. Tamika Hugley does not appear on the LLC records at all. Paragraph four, under C2, your application answered no to the following question. Quote, are you the applicant, the corporation, LLC, or any shareholder currently delinquent in payment of any taxes or fees to any state or local government, end quote? The supplied answer is false. Michael Morrison is listed on the, as the only manager of 1290 Clothing Co. LLC in Secretary of State records, and multiple news outlets reported interviews conducted with Michael Morrison as its owner. Mr. Morrison is in fact delinquent in payment of occupation taxes to multiple governments, including Gwinnett County, Georgia. Next ground section under the code is 78-45C4. Due cause to suspend and revoke the license also exists under 78-45C4 because, quote, the applicant or licensee has failed to comply with the provisions of this chapter, or any other chapter of this Code of Ordinances, end quote. 1290 Clothing Co. LLC has failed to comply with Chapter 78 of the Cobb County Code of Ordinances. Due to false information supplied to this office, as described above, 1290 Clothing Co. LLC was issued an occupation tax certificate slash business license that is invalid for the business activity in which 1290 Clothing Co. LLC DBA Tokyo Valentino has and is actually engaged. Per Section 7833, the company was issued an occupation tax certificate slash business license reflecting retail sales of clothing as the principal activity or dominant line of such business. However, clothing is not the dominant line of business at 1290 Clothing Co. LLC DBA Tokyo Valentino. Then finally, under grounds, there are additional grounds under Section 78-45C5, and that portion of the letter states, due cause to suspend and revoke the license also exists under Section 78-45C5 because, quote, applicant or licensee during the 12 months next proceeding has engaged in misrepresentation of facts, whether through advertisement, or through any form of direct communication, oral or written, which is intended to mislead the public or any party within the licensee deals and pursuance of the licensed business, end quote. The organizer and manager of 1290 Clothing Co. LLC, Michael Morrison, has engaged in misrepresentation of facts to mislead the public concerning the licensed business. One, honored before May 25th, 2020, Morrison told East Cobb News that he was not opening a new store in East Cobb. Morrison denied being involved with 1290 Clothing Co., but that was misleading. Morrison is the sole organizer of 1290 Clothing Co. LLC, signed the Articles of Organization as the LLC's manager, and opened a Tokyo Valentino store in East Cobb in June 2020. Two, honored before May 26th, 2020, Morrison told the Marietta Daily Journal that he had nothing to do with 1290 Clothing, and that it was, quote, not even close to possible, end quote, that he was listed as an organizer of 1290 Clothing. But in January 2020, Morrison registered 1290 Clothing Co. LLC with the Georgia Secretary of State, signing the Articles of Organization as manager, listing his own address as the address for 1290 Clothing's principal office address, and using the same registered agent as for the Tokyo Valentino stores in Marietta, Gwinnett County, Brookhaven, and Atlanta. Paragraph number three, Morrison misrepresented to the Marietta Daily Journal that he did not know the location of the store at 1290 Johnson Ferry Road, despite the fact that months earlier he formed an LLC using the exact street number of the location for the name of the company. Number four, Morrison later admitted to the Marietta Daily Journal that his company was opening a store at 1290 Johnson Ferry Road, but he described it as, quote, an electric dance, or, end quote, electric dance music and festival clothing store, end quote. The truth was that Morrison opened a Tokyo Valentino store at the location, which sells lotions and lubricants, sex toys, smoke products and lingerie, not electric dance music or festival clothing. Paragraph five, under 78-45C5, says that honored before May 28th, 2020, Morrison told the Atlanta Journal Constitution that the store planned for 1290 Johnson Ferry Road, quote, might be a clothing store, it might be a Tokyo store, we just don't know, end quote. That statement demonstrates that Morrison's earlier denials and equivocations concerning the store were misrepresentations to mislead the public. The statement is also a misrepresentation itself, because renovations at the store were already underway, and the store opened as a Tokyo Valentino store selling sexual devices by June 9th, 2020. Finally, paragraph number six, under 78-45C5, Morrison also engaged in misrepresentations of fact to Tamika Hugley, who is the initial store manager for 1290 Clothing Co. LLC, concerning the kind of store Morrison intended to open and operate at 1290 Johnson Ferry Road. After Hugley obtained a business license to operate 1290 Clothing as a retail store selling clothing, undergarments, shoes, games, cards, et cetera, Morrison opened the store as a Tokyo Valentino that instead sells sex toys, lubricants, and lotions, smoke products, lingerie, leather gear, condoms, and other items. Morrison misrepresented his plans for the company and the store, and misled Hugley with regard to the 1290 Clothing Co. LLC business. On Tuesday, September 22nd, at 7:00 PM, the Board of Commissioners was to hold a hearing to determine whether your occupation tax certificate will be permanently revoked for one or more of the foregoing reasons. The hearing will be held in the BOC Meeting Room, Cobb Administration Building, located at 100 Cherokee Street in Marietta. Sincerely, Alicia Webb, Business License Division Manager. Those are the grounds for the revocation that brings us here tonight. Thank you.
At this, at this time, the licensee has opportunity to respond by reading the filed response. Mr. Wiggins, do you care to do that?
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Rowling. What do you mean by the filed response?
Well, have you, the only thing that I can think of that you filed at that time was your initial motion to continue?
Well, we do have, excuse me, Carrie Wiggins, on behalf of the, of the store, we do have four motions that I would like to file. Can I file those now?
Any of them considered to be your response?
Yeah, all four of them would be, would be my response.
Okay. Are there any parts of those that you want to read to the, to the, to the board?
Well, if I, if I may, could I go ahead and distribute them to the board?
Well, you can read them at this point in time, during your presentation of the case, then you can distribute them.
Oh, is this, I'm sorry, you bear with me, I've not participated.
That's okay, just take your time.
Yeah, yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this more or less an opening statement, is that what this is?
You, you have the right at this point in time, yes, to read a response to the board regarding the accusations that were made. So it's reading that response that's been filed with, with the board. You, you could waive that right if you want to.
Yeah, well, let me just say briefly, we appreciate the opportunity to be here, of course, we wish we weren't in this posture here. The store is, believes and is, well, is certain that it opened lawfully, and I, as, as sometimes happens, a store like this, that, that has sort of the allure, that it appeals to adults, generates some controversy. I, I believe it's a vocal minority, it usually is. Most people understand the store is probably operating lawfully, it is. And we will show that each of these charges, once you peel them apart, there's really nothing there. I mean, it boils down to that the store was misrepresenting what it was going to be to the public. And I guess I just heard to a former employee, but that, that's not true, and even if it were true, it has the right to do that. Okay, so I'll wait and, and hear what the, the county wants to present. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again.
Mr. Berthold, you can proceed.
Sure. Members of the commission, I've handed up a, a certification, and I have tendered to the clerk a set of exhibits, and for ease of reference, I'm going to be pulling them up on the screen so that you can see them, we can navigate them, and I think that will expedite the process quite helpfully. But the certification in front of you is a, is a document that describes documents that are in the code file, in the file for the Business License Division. And they are numbered one through 16. One is the occupation tax certificate code sections that we're talking about, specifically 7845, 7833, and 7842. I've given a copy of these to opposing counsel. They're the ones referenced in the letter, essentially. Number two, the OTC application of 1290 Clothing Co. LLC. Number three is the occupation tax certificate that was actually issued. Number four is the letter from Attorney Aronson that was submitted, that's an attorney for Tokyo Valentino on June 10th, essentially disclosing then, after they got open, that they were going to be adding certain sexually related products. Number five is a compilation of emails with the original person who filled out the application, who apparently is no longer involved in the business, and is, has, has parted ways with the business, that's Tamika Hugley. Exhibit six are emails with another individual, Jay Nault, who communicated with the business license office, and claimed to have authority and to be able to speak on behalf of 1290 Clothing Co. And then there is a letter from Attorney Aronson on August 28th, in response to the Business License Division seeking information about the inventory and sales, which is allowed and authorized to do under Section 78-42 of the code. And so that was responded to with some inventory information from the company on August 28th. And then number nine is their inventory list, it's like 160 some pages. And then number 10 is a one-page sort of summary, an analysis of that inventory list. 11s are the articles and documents regarding 1290 Clothing Co. that are referenced in the news articles and the charges that I read to you previously. Number 12 is a, another part of the file in the Business License Division, the DeKalb County Superior Court contempt order, that was entered against another store in this chain in Brookhaven. Number 13 is a letter from Gwinnett County indicating that the Tokyo Valentino store in that county is delinquent on occupation taxes. Number 14 is the occupation tax certificate suspension letter, which was the charges that I just read, you have a copy of that in front of you. Number, sorry, that was number 14. Number 15 is 1290 Clothing Co. LLC's original motion to continue the hearing that was originally scheduled for September 22, 2020. And then 16 is an email chain between, with Tokyo consenting to the timing of the hearing being outside the 30 days that the code calls for, because they asked for the continuance, and that is part of it. Also, I have, so those are documents, exhibits, one through 16, we have certified copies of all of them, and at this time, I would offer those into the record. I, I guess I would direct it to you, Chairman Weiss, I offer those into the record, will they be accepted into the record?
Yeah, I was gonna say, unless I hear any objections from the board members, I think we should go ahead and agree to accept them into the record. Hearing none, we'll accept them into the official part of, the official records for today's due process hearing.
All right. And at, at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to have, call up on the screen the document, can you put it in the regular view where I can see the bookmarks? Is that possible? Thank you. And so essentially, I'm going to direct you back to the document that we laid out the charges, and we are going to navigate through this, and is there a function with a mouse that I can do?
I can advance it for you.
Okay. If we can go to bookmark number two. On the left there. Yep. And as we, and if I do this, will it scroll? Yeah, okay. So the name, okay. Under this page, there are three highlighted areas. Number one is the name doing business as is 1290 Clothing. Line number seven is the full detailed description of the business, is the retail clothing, undergarment, shoes, games, cards, and other misk that was referenced in the letter. And then line number three, where it says president managing member, it shows Tamika Hugley as the president or managing member of that entity. Those are all parts of the grounds that were laid out. Those are all parts of the grounds that were laid out in seventy-eight dash forty-five C two, where there were false statements made because, A, they've never done businesses 1290 Clothing, B, that full detailed description of the business does not account for approximately seventy percent of their inventory and seventy-eight percent of the cost of their inventory. So what they, what they got an OTC as to do clothing, that's the only thing that they have that would qualify as that would be lingerie. That is less than fourteen percent of the inventory items and less than nine percent of the cost of the inventory. And so that is definitely not the principal or predominant business. And that is what line seven tells us. And then number twelve, where Tamika Hugley represents herself to be the President or Managing Member of 1290 Clothing Co. LLC, the applicant, she is not. And if we scroll down approximately, one more page, that is, and then it says, "Are you the applicant, the corporation LLC or any shareholder currently delinquent in payment of taxes to any state or local government?" The answer was no. The reality is, is that another Tokyo store owned by the same person is in delinquency for the last three years, has not paid taxes, occupation taxes to Gwinnett County. And that is actually item number, let me see, thirteen in the exhibit list. So then as we turn over to page, keep going down in this material, it's down to page seven. And so now we're on page three. At the bottom, it's numbered four, five, six, seven, and, not the tab, just keep scrolling. Yeah, sorry. I think we're almost there. We'll get to a Secretary of State document. There's Ms. Tamika's, Hugley's license that was submitted with the application. And as we go down, we see the Articles of Organization, and we see that in fact, the authorizer signature is Michael Scott Morrison, and he is deemed the manager. And so that shows that the information submitted on the application form is in fact not true. If we go to tab three, which is just the next page, so just scroll down, the occupation tax certificate that they actually received was for clothing dash miscellaneous retail. And as I've discussed previously and as outlined in the charges, we'll see that that is actually less than fourteen percent of their inventory and less than nine percent of the cost of their inventory. The next thing we have is under section seventy-eight dash forty-five C four, and this really relates to this. They got, they did not comply with chapter seventy-eight because they did not get the license that they had to get for the type of store that they are. They're not predominantly clothing. As you know, the way this works is when, based on what you disclose, the Business License Office doesn't double-check everything you say to make sure it's true, they don't hunt you down, it's an honesty policy. The whole licensing system, and there have been over twenty thousand licenses OTCs issued every year for the past, you know, number of years over a decade, I think there's been hundreds of thousands that have been issued in the last fifteen years. And ninety percent of the time, that's never an issue. People get a license for what they're going to do, and they go do what they say they're going to do, and they are required to do what is their principal business activity. So if we can go to tab one at the top, click on Bookmark one, and go down, pass, I think, three or four pages, and we'll get to a section of the code that is seventy-eight dash thirty-three, and we'll see what that says. And it's the next one that's certified right there. And it says that classification of each business subject to this article shall be based on the principal activity or dominant line of such business, comma, i.e., meaning that is, that series of goods or services which produces the largest proportion of the business's gross revenues from all sources. So it's clear that what they're generating their income from is overwhelmingly sexual devices, sexual materials that are not disclosed on their application form. And that is one of the grounds under section seventy-eight dash forty-five C four. It says, "Due to false information supplied to the office, 1290 Clothing was issuing an OTC slash business license that's invalid for the business activity in which the clothing company, DBA Tokyo Valentino, is actually engaged." And there's a couple of exhibits that bear that out. One of them is in exhibit number five with Tamika Hugley, where she says, "I want to be out of this business, I'm parting ways with these folks, they should get a business, a proper business license for their store." Essentially, you know, "This isn't what I signed up for." And so that's in exhibit five, and let's go there now. And so she engages in a series of transactions that, if we scroll down to the next page, it says that, "I'd like to cancel the business license." And Ms. Webb writes her back and says, "Is the store closing, sort of what's going on?" And then there's some correspondence, is there a change of management or a change of location? And if you go down just one little bit, on, keep going down to exhibit... Okay, this is exhibit five C, on the first page of five C. And it says, "I'm requesting that a business license for 1290 Clothing Co. be canceled. I have authority to do so, she alleges, because it's in my name, I was not involved in the ordering of inventory or products. I don't have access to financial records or reports." This is after the Business License Division had asked for sort of inventory and sales information under seventy-eight dash forty-two of the code. And she says, "I have pleaded for my previous partners to make changes, and they have refused to do so. I am no longer a managing member and want to cut all ties." Truth be told, the Secretary of State records never reflect her being a managing member or any part of the LLC. And then she said, "The store that currently exists should apply for a proper business license." So this is the person who filled out the application for the OTC, says, "I'm out, I've been pleading with my partners to make changes, and they should go and apply for the proper business license." So that's part of the grounds under C four, that they did not get a license for the proper kind of business. And then under C five, we have several different articles, and I want to show a couple of things while we're under the C two grounds where they submitted false information, like they didn't get a full description of the business. If we can go to exhibit nine, this is their document that they supplied to us, inventory categories. There's where we see that if you add up the quantities, it's seventy percent sex toys, which is the toys category, lotions and lube, which are sexual in nature, smoke products, and then seventy-eight percent are the dollar amounts. And the only thing that they listed that is directly relevant to their application is lingerie, which comes down, and it's less than fourteen percent of the inventory items, less than nine percent of the value. So three hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars worth of inventory in the store, less than ten percent, less than twenty-six thousand is the lingerie. And then if we can go to exhibit ten, this is an analysis of that, that shows essentially over in the far right-hand corner, that seventy-seven point nine-nine percent of the store, the percentage of cost of their inventory is reflected in the top three categories, none of which are referenced in their application whatsoever. And then if we can go down to exhibit eleven, click on that, and essentially, as we scroll down through exhibit eleven, these are the series of articles that were referenced in the charges letter, in the suspension letter. First of all, it started with the Articles of Organization showing Scott Morrison, Michael Scott Morrison is the key person and the manager. And then the next page is, it launches into the articles that are referenced under C five. That is the East Cobb News article saying that he's, "I'm not involved." This page, I want to stop here for a second. In addition to the Secretary of State, it shows that the organizer, the top line is 1290 Clothing Co. LLC. It shows the organizer, the principal address being Michael Morrison's residential address, I believe, in Atlanta. And then it says, "The organizer is Rebecca Kreider. She is the same statutory agent or agent for service of process for all the other Tokyo Valentino stores that you see that are highlighted here, or all the Michael Scott Morrison operated entities." So then we go down to the next page, and these are statements in the East Cobb News that reference, I just want to have it in front of everybody's eyes, that he denies, keep going, just kind of keep scrolling. He, is where Michael Morrison said, he's named as the organizer of 1290 Clothing, but he denied he's opening a new store in East Cobb. Keep going to the...
Scott, I'm loathe to interrupt you, but I'm just going to object to these articles on the basis that you're offering, the words in the articles for the truth of the matter. So that's a hearsay objection.
Okay. And my response to the hearsay objection is, they've already been certified as public documents, that's a clear exception to the hearsay rule. So, but they're already in the record, so I don't, that's my argument in response for the record. But he denied he's opening a new store in East Cobb.
Just responding to that instruction for the board, hearsay is allowed to be able to come in for the board for consideration. The rules are that this is to be as informal as compatible with justice, and so hearsay is allowed to be able to come in.
Yeah. What weight you give to it is a different matter, so. But he denied he's opening a new store. If we keep scrolling in this process, next, here's the highlight right here, if we scroll up a little bit, says, "The new business license was given to Tamika Hugley." And then as we go down a little bit more, we get into the Marietta Daily Journal article, and here's, sorry, went up. "When contacted by East Cobb News Friday about whether he's opening a new store in East Cobb, Morrison said, 'I have no idea what you're referring to.'" So in these documents, and just continue scrolling through, I'm not going to stop and read any more of it, are the direct quotes that are referenced in the suspension letter of September eighth, twenty twenty. The fact that Kreider's the organizer and so on and so forth. So in the Marietta Daily Journal article, he wasn't, he said, "It wasn't even close to possible he's the organizer of 1290 Clothing." And the next article, which is another Marietta Daily Journal article, he claims that he had no idea what, he said, he asked the question, "Where is this? What's the location?", as though he was ignorant of the 1290 address that he had recently formed LLC to run this Tokyo store. And then the next article coming down is an Atlanta Journal Constitution article, and he, in that Atlanta Journal Constitutional article, he essentially said, "It might be a clothing store, it might be a Tokyo store." And this is where he essentially proves his prior false statements, or his prior statements as being false. And then finally, in the Hugley emails that I've already read to you, she basically indicates there was misrepresentations, and they need to get the proper business license. I have a couple more exhibits. I have one witness that I want to call, and at this time, Business License Division will call for testimony, Mr. Jose Santana. Mr. Santana, will you please state your full name for the record?
Jose Santana.
Okay. And what is your occupation?
Surveillance Investigator, private eye.
Okay. And you can take your mask off at the time, just for clarity of the record. And how long have you been a private investigator?
Approximately ten years.
Okay. And did you have occasion to go to the Tokyo Valentino store at 1290 Johnson Ferry Road in the last week?
I did.
Okay, and when'd you go?
Friday evening.
Okay, and tell me what you did, what'd you see and what'd you do?
I arrived at the store about eight o'clock, walked in, just observed, and ended up buying a couple of items, and walking out.
Okay, so you basically went there as a customer?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to hand you what's been marked for identification purposes as exhibit seventeen. Can you take a flip through that?
Sure.
Can you tell me what this exhibit is?
These are the items that I purchased from the store.
Okay. And are these photographs that you took?
Yes.
Okay. And are these, so there is four pictures of certain items that you took, or five pictures of items that you purchased, as well as a receipt? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If you turn to the last page, other than the batteries you bought, can you tell us what you purchased?
I'm sorry, the last page, page five of six?
Page six of six, the, which has the receipt?
Page six of six, yes.
Okay. And is that listing everything that you purchased?
That's correct.
And then other than the batteries, were all your purchases sexual devices?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Let me ask you about the layout of the store. Approximately, well, let me ask you about the sexual devices. When you were there, did you see vibrators?
Yes, I did.
Did you see dildos?
I did.
Did you see artificial vaginas and other masturbator-type devices?
I did.
Did you see sex dolls?
I did not see any sex dolls.
Okay. I'm including, turn to page one of six, or page two of six of your exhibit. Is this a life-size doll that has sexual orifices, for lack of a better term?
I would say the lower level, yes.
Okay, okay. So you did make a purchase of something like that?
Yes.
Okay. Were these a representative sample of the sexual devices that you saw on the premises?
Yes.
Okay. And did you see sexual devices in, on island display cases?
I did.
And how many rows or shelving units were on each of those display cases?
Say approximately four or five.
Okay. And did you see sexual devices on the walls?
I did.
And when you saw those on the walls, did they go from floor to ceiling?
They did.
Okay. And if you count just the aisles right around those display cases and those walls, in the portions of the store that are containing sexual devices, approximately how much or what percentage of the square footage of the interior of the store is occupied by sexual devices?
I would say approximately seventy percent.
Okay. All right. At this time, Chairman, I offer exhibit seventeen, which is the composite exhibit of those photographs.
Opposing counsel been provided a copy?
Yes, he's been provided a copy.
No objection.
I'm sorry?
He said, "No objection."
Okay.
So I understand that they are admitted?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing further for this witness at this time, I'll pass the witness.
Good evening, Mr. Santana, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. So you testified you're a private detective?
Yes.
Who hired you?
I do work for Scott.
For Scott, Mr. Burkhild?
Yes, Mr. Burkhild.
The private attorney that's here tonight?
I'm sorry?
The private attorney that's here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And are you familiar with Cobb County generally?
I am not.
So do you know what other stores in Cobb County sell what you're referring to as sexual devices?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Are you familiar with other stores in unincorporated Cobb County that sell sexual devices?
I am not.
How much did, how much were you paid to go look at this store?
Are you asking if I was given a budget?
Yeah.
I was given two hundred dollars to go in and purchase a few items.
Okay. And you went one time?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Bill, I'm having a really hard time hearing the other attorney. Every time he talks, you look away from the mic, we can't hear you. So when you talk, you need to kind of talk into the mic, please.
Yes, sir, I will do better.
Just one follow-up question, Mr. Santana, did you understand that when I hired you that you'd be doing a project on behalf of my client, the Business License Division in Cobb County?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Can I follow up on that? Who hired you, Cobb County or the Business License Division of Cobb County?
Mr. Burkhild is who I do the work for, so I would say he hired me.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, may I step down?
Well, the board, if the board cares too, you can ask any questions of the witness at this time.
Does the board have any questions of this witness?
We asked, "Should the witness be excused?"
I'm sorry?
We asked, "Should the witness be excused for this evening?"
The witness can be excused.
Thank you.
Sorry. At this time, we'll turn our attention back to the combined exhibits, and specifically And this is, I got a stamp from the Gwinnett County Superior Court Office, this is an order granting summary judgment against another Tokyo Valentino store in Gwinnett County. Essentially, the essence of this, if you turn to page three, so we're down two pages, shows that here in the quoted area, the highlighted area, the evidence shows that May of fifteen Tokyo filed for a business license, submitted an arguably incorrect or incomplete copy of the lease, where it just said it was retail, and then it got, submitted a business, a tobacco license, got an OTC as a tobacco store. And then after they opened, they wrote Gwinnett County a letter, they said, "Oh, we're going to add all these sexually explicit items." And essentially, this is sort of like the Brookhaven Order, that is another exhibit, part of the certified record here, that's already been tendered and admitted into evidence. But essentially, at this point, I'm offering a copy of this. But essentially, at this point, I'm offering a copy of this Superior Court order to show that this is a pattern in a practice. This, you know, Mr. Wiggins is going to get up here, he's going to make arguments, he might make some factual statements. I don't see that he's brought any witness here to testify to subject it to cross-examination, but I see that that is probably where he's going to, to make arguments and maybe assert some facts. But the pattern and practice of this store, whether it's in Brookhaven or whether it's in Gwinnett County, is to submit an application, get in, and then open up a sex shop and, and not disclose what they're going to be in advance. And at this time, I offer exhibit 18.
I have a question on that. Can we go back to the top of the document, please?
Yes.
What is the date that this was filed?
This is September 6th, 2018.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may respond, I'm going to object to this, this exhibit. We were not on notice that the county would be trying to prove a policy or practice as it pertains to 1290 Clothing Company. This is a document that deals with Tokyo Gwinnett LLC, involved with private litigation, looks like a landlord dispute in Superior Court of Gwinnett County. There's nothing, there's no, there's no notice that we're going to be accused of a policy or practice. So let me object on the grounds. It's not relevant.
And my response to that is it's relevant to show credibility issues with prior submissions to other local governments. So it's, it's not one of the grounds specified in the letter, but to the extent that, and maybe I'll just wait for rebuttal and to see if there's going to be factual assertions made on behalf of the attorney for 1290 Clothing Co. So I'll, I'll withdraw it at this time and perhaps we need to...
Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
If we could see the business license application, there was, there was a item, it was highlighted in yellow and it said no.
Yes. That's exhibit 2.
Just, let me ask the question first.
Sorry.
Okay. Brad, slide down, please. All right. Well, stop right there. All right. I just wanted to see what number 18 said. So Alicia, number 18, I have a question for you. Number 18 references...
Put her under oath first before you ask her a question.
I want to make sure that we understand what 18, what they're saying yes or no to.
Okay. Just what, do you solemnly swear the testimonies you have to give before this board regarding the pending matter? Read the truth, full truth, I think, but the truth. If you would identify yourself for the, for the board and for the record. Yes.
Alicia Webb, Cobb County Business License Division Manager.
So number 18, it looks like basically it references delinquent or outstanding taxes or fees. It does not necessarily reference a summary judgment order by the courts. Or when, so is it only monetary?
Number 18 refers to the delinquent taxes owed to Gwinnett County.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So the question then is the, without going through the entire summary judgment order, does it have any reference to monetary fees?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So I, I think we should just let him withdraw for right now.
Okay. It's withdrawn for the moment. Thank you. And with exhibits 1 through 17, 17 being the pictures being tendered and submitted to the clerk and provided to the board, we would pass the case to Mr. Wiggins. I understand that we have the ability to rebut and produce additional evidence should it be necessary after his presentation.
Mr. Wiggins, over here.
Sorry.
Yeah, this side. It may be better if you do your presentation for the board where you're in front of the microphone and they can actually see, see you and hear you better. If you don't mind.
That's fine. I am going to call one witness. I'm going to call Ms. Webb as a witness.
I guess the question is, is would that, would it be an inconvenience to you, for you to move to the dais here to make your comments? The, the sound system addresses the audience, but it doesn't carry up here very well.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that we hear all your points.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure that it's not inconveni, if it's, if it's too much trouble, then please, you can stay there. I'm just trying to make sure that you have the most, best opportunity for the board completed to hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will do as instructed. I'm a light speaker.
Okay.
But I do have these four motions, and I, I just don't want to miss the train on an opportunity to present them to you. I can, if, if it's okay with everyone, I can just present those at the end, maybe start with Ms. Webb as a witness, and then present them after speaking with Ms. Webb and make those arguments.
It'd be up to the board that that's a reasonable request.
I think, I think the best approach is, is that we've made specific assertions here tonight.
Yes.
And if you'd respond to those, that would keep it within a certain framework that we would be understanding, that way we're not, you know, wandering too far afield, which is what the early issue was on the summary judgment, is that it was requested, put into evidence, but in fact, it didn't respond to the issues at hand here. So I, I would encourage you as much as possible to stay within that framework, and that way we'll, we'll have a reference point that we can stick to with regard to your response and your rebuttal.
Good evening. So the, the motions, rather than just put this all into one omnibus motion, we, we thought it would be more helpful to the board to file them as four distinct, separate motions. I will distribute those now, if I may. Do I, who do I? Okay. Yeah.
Mr. Wiggins, do you have a copy for me as well as, as well as the counsel?
I gave one to Mr. Burkehold.
Do you have one for, for me?
I don't have one for you. I'm sorry. Okay. Bear with me. Let's see.
How many copies do you have? Do you have just enough to send to me or you're distributing to the entire board?
I think I have one for each member of the board, and I have two more. I gave one to Mr. Burkehold, and I think I have one more. So let me get those two. Let me go get my copies.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I would just make, and I don't know if this is on my, I would just make an objection as the time is, there's maybe, maybe this page two. I would not... I would make an objection for the record on behalf of the Business License Division because these were not filed responses, but they are, you know, 30 or so pages of motions tendered at the hearing. I haven't had a chance to respond to them. I'll do my best in due course, but just for the record, I'd, I'd make that objection.
Okay. Let's sum it up.
So...
Same ones? Individual? All right. I'm one short.
Okay. And Carrie, before you get started, one other objection, as I'm flipping through these for the first time, I'm seeing that there are, there's evidence in these motions, other occupation tax certificates, correspondence not related to 1290 Clothing Co. LLC, but other entities and business licenses. And I would just note for the record, a relevance objection under the hearing procedure that governs this proceeding, 6-147H, the last sentence of subsection 2 says, "No evidence shall be presented, which is not relevant to the charges." So I, I will maintain a relevant objection. Thank you.
May I respond?
Okay, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. What, this is not...
You do not have enough for all the board to have? I don't think all the board members actually have one.
I'm sorry?
One more?
I need, I'm still short one motion. No, I have that one here. It's the big package, the one with multiple pages. That one right there. What is that one titled?
Oh, okay. Yeah. That's, that's right. I've, I've taken two exhibits from the big package I was going to present to Ms. Webb as exhibits. So exhibits A and B that are on the big motion, I was going to talk to her about those exhibits directly. So this, this fifth, this fifth motion is missing A and B, or it's not missing, I've taken them out. So I can, I can distribute it, but how would you like me?
Well, we can't, we can't hear the motion unless we all have a copy, all right?
Okay. Well, so I'll give you, I'll give you...
If you give us time to have, we can probably have somebody run up and make them a copy for you, but...
I will give you this motion, and I will use the motion itself when I talk to Ms. Webb. It's not steep. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Now we're ready.
Okay. So the first ground in the letter, I'm using the city's or the county's exhibit to make it more consistent here. Bear with me. I'm sorry.
Mr. Wiggins, number 14. Are we looking for the suspended license?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. So the first grounds in the show cause letter says, "Your application states that the doing business as name would be 1290 Clothing." Clearly, that is correct. It does indicate 1290 Clothing. But let me just tell you, that is, that is not material. And we will expound on that with Ms. Webb. Other businesses have applied and put in the, the DBA have put their corporate name in, for example, and it's, it's not material. I don't know if they had put their name that they're traveling under today in the DBA, what would be different? That's the way you figure out whether it's material. If they put in Tokyo Valentino, there would be no denial of the license application for that name alone. You can't deny a license based on a DBA unless the DBA is scandalous or something. I suppose there, there would be a basis there. But there's nothing scandalous about the words Tokyo or Valentino even taken together. And we'll, we'll show some other applications that have errors in the DBA. The second grounds for revoking or suspending the license, I'm unclear, is the detailed or detailed description of the business. This I would like to talk to Ms. Webb about. I don't know if you want me to break here and bring in a witness. I'm trying to go in order of the letter, but at the same time, I do have witnesses I want to talk to about a couple of items.
Well, you have to call your own witnesses. You're not going to call the county one.
I'm going to call Ms. Webb as a witness.
Either one...
Chairman, he'd be allowed to do that.
Well, Ms., Ms. Webb is a county employee. Her position and responsibility is to defend the purpose of the county. So she can state to the facts, but that's all I'm going to allow her to state to, all right? I just want to understand here that she works for Cobb County. So I'm, I wouldn't let you talk, call her as a witness, but I'm very, very careful about what kind of question you're going to ask her and for her opinions, all right? She can state to the facts, but not the opinions that you're trying to list it out of her.
Well, I will do my best to...
Okay. All right. Just wanted to understand that.
So...
And this is a, this is, you know, this is a, a due process hearing. There's a lot of administrative leeway given in these kind of hearings. So, all right. So go ahead.
Well, does she want to step up here and get some more?
Uh, whatever makes you comfortable, sir.
Ms. Webb, you've already been sworn, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Webb, obviously you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
What is your title exactly?
Business License Division Manager.
Okay. And in that role, are you, do you have opportunity to see OTC or business license applications?
Yes.
How many roughly do you think you've seen over the years?
150, 200,000 in my time with the Business License Division.
Has anyone ever on occasion put down their corporate name where it says doing business as?
Yes.
I mean, that happens, when that happens, do you just let it roll? Do you call them up and tell them it needs to be corrected? What do you do?
Objection, vague. Have a particular application or particular language on an application.
He's, he's, he's speaking to process. I'll allow it.
Yeah.
What would we normally do?
Yeah.
We would assume that's how they're, what they're going to operate as.
Okay. Have the, there's been occasion when you've followed up with people to help them and correct it. Is that true?
No.
You've never, in the 200 or 150,000 applications, when somebody's gotten the DBA wrong, you've never reached out to help them correct it?
No.
In the 200,000 applications that you've seen, are you aware of a business license that's been revoked because they put the wrong DBA on the application?
No.
Okay. Let's talk about the full detailed description of business, page 6 of the application. I'm going to show you exhibit A. See that?
Yes.
What, what, that's exhibit A to our motion. Do you know who that application's for?
For Bath &amp; Body Works.
Okay. And do you see where it asks for the full detailed description of the business?
Yes, sir.
Can you read what it says?
Retail sales of personal care products.
Okay. Would you consider that a full detailed description of the business?
In 1999, yes.
I'm sorry, 1999. What's different about 2020?
This application was submitted in 1999. I'm assuming that at that time, this is how that was processed.
What is, you, you see the, you see the line there for full, full detailed description of business, right?
Yes.
What should a business like Target, for instance, put on that line? It's about three and a half inches.
That's, that calls, that calls for an opinion.
I, I have a problem with that, too. I think that she can only answer questions about the documents you put in front of her, not what you suppose or what you want her to make comments about.
Okay. Let me show you exhibit B of the motion. And this is, the date of this business began in July of this year, so this is not a 20, let me see. Let me go back to exhibit A. You okay? Yeah. Let me show you exhibit B. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Exhibit B, can you identify the business applicant on that one?
Seller, I'm sorry, the, I'm sorry, one more time?
Can you identify the applicant in exhibit B?
C.A. Merchandising LLC.
And how did they describe the full detail, what was their full detailed description of business on their application?
Seller of various merchandise.
Would you consider that a full detailed description of business?
No.
Okay. And in fairness to you, there, scores and scores of applications list items like that, they say retail this or retail that, isn't that fair?
Objection, it's not in evidence, it's more hypothetical about things not in front of her. The other objection that I'll make, and I, just, this might save time, I know he's trying to make an equal protection argument about the way other applications have been treated, but to preserve that argument for a later challenge, all he needs to do is state the argument on the record. He doesn't have to go through factual predicate, and I think if he's, if these motions are in, I think whatever he wants to argue is in the motion plus his attachments.
I think, I think the issue at hand here is that in your application, you stated that the twelve nine clothing company LLC was going to operate a retail store selling clothing, undergarments, shoes, games, cards, and other miscellaneous items, alright?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So your argument is what the other miscellaneous is, and we'll have to decide upon that-
Right.
When it comes time for your closing arguments.
Understood, but I just want to make sure I, I understand county policy, which is a fact-based, you know, issue.
Wait.
Right.
And like you said, we have over thirteen thousand businesses in Cobb County?
Yeah.
Alright, but we're just going to the heart of the matter here, which is what you filed the application for. But I understand where you're going-
Yes, sir.
And I think you've made your point.
And absolutely, and here's the thing, we asked, we wanted to look at all these applications and see what they said, and through confusion, I suppose, we did not get our open records, which we would have put all those into the record, just to show on this three and a half inch line, it's not unusual for a business like Target to say retail products, things like that. Okay, alright. So, Ms. Webb, the, the line itself, it doesn't say list your dominant line of business, does it?
No.
And you're being a professional overseeing the Business License Office or Division, you know that dominant line is a term of art in your ordinance, right?
Yes.
It's actually a defined term under the chapter seventy-eight, I think it is, right? Is that right?
Yes.
And so, if you wanted an applicant to have to list the dominant line on that space, certainly the county has the wherewithal to, to put that instruction there, right? Fair statement?
Well, the county code clearly states that the, as we've submitted evidence by our counsel for the business section, that the primary business, or it has to be listed on the application.
With due respect, I'll say that for argument, but I-
Can I ask the attorney a question? In your June tenth letter, by your motion document-
Mm-hmm.
You said subsequent communication with the county, specifically Mr. Daniel Arison's letter of June tenth, informing the county there would be a small percentage of adult products, but they did not make the store an adult store. What is your definition of small? Seventy percent is not a small percentage.
The, that gets into argument because there was nothing in your ordinance-
Well, yeah.
The whole time around-
Small percentage.
Well, first of all, the toys were not considered adult products until Mr. Berthold redrafted your ordinance in September this year. So the toys that are making up the seventy percent, they're not adult. And lotions and gels and lubes, those are not adult products. Those are soaps, those are things you can find at any novelty store. But those are, that's argument. But the point is, is the application, it could ask me the name of my dog, it could, I could answer it, it can ask me what my, for a full detailed description of the business, but that's not the same thing as asking you for the dominant line. Fair statement?
Repeat that?
When the application says, please provide the full detailed description of business, that's not the same thing as asking for the dominant line of the business.
It does not ask for the dominant line.
Okay. And then- Let's look at the, let's look at the application, I know you have a lot of, can you move your notes for just a moment, please? Ms. Webb, I'm looking at county's Exhibit Two, might be page two, do you see the page number? It's the actual application.
The second page of the application is what you're asking me to look at?
Oh, no ma'am, the, the first page, and then, and then the, yes, the second page of the application.
Okay.
You see on item number seventeen, it lists the name of the man, what does seventeen ask?
Name the manager of this location.
Okay. Any reason to doubt that Ms. Hughley was not the manager of the location?
No.
Okay. And then going back to page one, item twelve, Ms. Tamika Hughley has listed herself as president slash managing member. Is it your understanding that Ms. Tamika Hughley was not the managing member of the LLC?
Based on the Secretary of State documents, she is not listed as a president or the managing member of the LLC or corporate entity.
The LLC doesn't have to list the managing member and the Secretary of State, does it?
Objection, calls for legal determination.
Well, she's, this, she's testifying that because of that, we're here to revoke a license, I think I can ask that question.
Well, I'm not here to, and I'm not here to defend the Secretary of State of Georgia, I'm here to talk about Cobb County.
I understand.
So we can talk to the documents that were filed with Cobb County.
Yes.
So if you have any issues about what's going on in the state of Georgia, I'd be more than happy to give you, you know, Secretary Raffensperg's phone number. Let's stick to the documents that were submitted under Cobb County.
I'm trying. So, I guess you're basing, you're basing that Ms. Hughley was, at the time of this application, was not a managing member based on the Secretary of State website, is that right?
The document that she filed with the application.
What document is that?
The Articles of Organization.
Okay, okay. If Ms. Hughley had, and this is about the document, Mr. Chair, if she had answered under number sixteen that she was the person completing the application, as opposed to number twelve being a president slash managing member, would that have changed anything in the process?
That calls, that calls for a conclusion, that she doesn't know.
I want to, it's material, if it doesn't make a difference, that's material to my argument.
You might want to call Ms. Hughley here as your witness. She's the one that filed the application, Mr. Williams. Is she here tonight?
I'm sorry, Chairman, I'm, I'm having an issue with this argument, with him questioning her on just objective questions. It's becoming a very combative experience when I, too, am looking for her just to respond based off of her experience with the department, and we're not even giving her an opportunity to provide a reasonable response to what is a question that is trying to find the matter of a fact, the fact of a matter. I'm, I'm having a terrible time with how this is-
He asked her, if Ms. Hughley was, he asked her what Ms. Hughley would have done, alright? That's, that's his question, how would she know?
I, I did not perceive that as the question that he asked.
Well, I, I-
I just feel like there's been a series of questions that have been asked that are resulting in us not just getting a response to finding a, the fact of a matter, and I-
I understand, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to ask Ms. Webb is whether somebody listing themselves as a president, or a vice president, or simply somebody trying to fill out the application as number sixteen contemplates, whether that makes a difference in the processing of a, of an OTC application?
Objection, vague.
But the, the application doesn't call, it asked for, who's the managing director? That was the question on the application.
I hear-
So what is your question about these other positions? What does that have to do with it?
I'm asking because I want to know if it would make a difference in the processing of the application.
If she had not identified herself as a managing member, that would not have been listed in the charges or in the letter from our office.
Okay. I'll leave that alone, I don't want to frustrate anyone here. Just to be clear, there's no reason to doubt the accuracy of her name, her address, her social, everything else that's listed in that item, right?
To her personal information?
Yes, ma'am.
I have no reason to doubt that.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions for Ms. Webb.
I, I have some.
Okay, Mr. Berthold does?
Commissioner, oh, it has some questions.
Okay, I'd like to go back to this discussion about the dominant line.
Yes, sir.
If I come and put a business application in to sell beverages, if I do not tell you that I'm going to sell alcohol, you would not go into the section of code relative to alcohol, the fact that I would need an alcohol license and all of that, is that correct?
Correct.
So it would be misleading on my part if I simply stated beverages without stating the clear intent of what my dominant line would be, which would be alcoholic beverages. And so, is it safe for this board to make the assumption that when you look for the items that are going to be sold, it is to ensure that state and county laws are followed particular to the items that might be sold?
Yes.
Is it also, because the county has an adult entertainment code, then certain items that would be sold, that would fall into that category, if there's enough of them sold, then it changes the nature of the business, is that correct?
There is an adult entertainment ordinance, and had those items been listed, we would have questioned that.
And that would have put the business into a different section of the code?
It could have, but I would have certainly met with zoning and legal before making that determination.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may ask just a couple of questions, as part of, under the procedures, I think the Business License Office can ask the witness, even though she's our representative. Mr. Wiggins made a reference about not getting documents, but it looks like the, your office did supply many documents in response to open records requests to this applicant or representatives of this applicant, is that true?
Yes, sir.
And is your understanding that you've actually, your office has produced more than three hundred pages of responsive documents?
Yes, sir.
Even though you've never received any payment for any of those documents?
I, my office has not, and to my knowledge, legal has not either.
And let me ask you this, is it common for someone to give a trade name or Doing Business as Name, and then go out and use a totally different name?
Not in my experience.
Is it common in Cobb County, in your nineteen years of experience here, for someone to list a series of items in their description of their business and exclude the three categories of items that are the largest portion of their business?
Repeat that, please.
Is it common, or does it happen often, where someone gives that full detailed description of their business, and they list what they're going to sell, and they exclude the three largest categories of sales?
No, sir.
I'll object, same reason you objected, mine, so, that's fine.
And one last question, under section seventy-eight dash thirty-three, that requires a business to be classified according to its principal activity or dominant line of business, do you rely upon the honesty of the applicant in filling out the application to disclose to you that dominant line of business so that you can properly classify the business for tax purposes?
Let me object, you're leading your own witness.
I agree.
It was a yes or no question.
I agree. That's leading the witness.
Okay. Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
On the dominant line again, back to that, and I'm not familiar, because I, I know that we have different fees for alcohol license, or, you know, different alcohol licenses. But does the nature of the business change the cost of the-
There are two categories, Commissioner Ott, A1 and A2, and they are set out in our SSE code, so profitability ratio determines if it falls in A1 or A2. So for instance, the base on one is one nineteen, the base on the other is one twelve, so there is a difference in the tax on the dollar amount.
So if the accurate information is not given on the application as to the nature of the business or the items being sold, they could be classified, the business could be classified in the wrong category?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Do you have any more questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, the witness can be excused.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the, of the commission. I will, I'm not sure, I don't have any more witnesses, I do have the motions, those have been tendered. I think we, we were thorough in, in writing out our objections, and so I won't go through them each here verbatim, I'm sure you'll appreciate that. But at the same time, I do want to hit some highlights, but I don't know, I'll defer to you if it's more appropriate, you know, to do that in a, in a closing, or I can just do it now, for brevity's sake.
I think we should probably handle each motion individually, alright?
Okay.
That way we, that way we keep the discussion fresh in our minds. So if that, if that's alright with the county attorney, that's alright, because again, he's got four motions here, and I'm concerned about waiting to the very end to address all of those, and then we might lose some of the cogency of the points that were made-
Okay.
If we wait to the very end.
Sure.
So what I like to do is do each motion individually, and I'll have, I'll have Commissioner Ott carry the motion, alright?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll, we'll talk about it and see where we'll go from there, alright?
Sure.
Sure. The, the first motion is the, the heavy one with all the exhibits, and it's, it's styled as a motion to dismiss grounds under seventy-eight forty-five C2, and then it goes on through to C4. And, no dispute on the first couple pages, just recites background, and then we get into this full description, full detailed description of business. Obviously Tokyo said retail clothing, undergarments, shoes, games, cards, and other miscellaneous. What we, what we've tried to do, I think what we've done, is we've attached six or seven other businesses that just had far less description, and to your point, Mr. Ott, I, I hear you, you're in AICS categorization, could affect the tax, it could affect other things to do with zoning, but those businesses didn't do that. And I, you know, and I also hear you, and, and Mr. Berthold, when you talk about section seventy-eight thirty-three of the Business License Code, which suggests, or it states actually, you know, every business subject to the provisions of this article shall be classified according to the major group, and that's all well and good. But that's incumbent on the business licensing staff, the professionals. That's the people that you hire and pay and that we all rely on as citizens, corporate citizens and individuals alike, they're governed by these ordinance that you, in, in your wisdom, have adopted. So what do they do? They prepare an application so that when the proverbial piano teacher, or somebody that wants to open a shoe store, or in this case, a novelty store, or a clothing store, and they come in, that application should capture whatever ingredients the business licensing folks think is important to carry out the ordinance. I can't help it, and certainly Mr. Morrison or this corporation, this LLC can't help it, that the application just asked for a detailed description of your inventory, and gave you a three and a half inch line. That's, that's the way the application's designed. So with that, our motion's basically saying, look at all the other businesses that did far, far, far less description than twelve ninety Clothing Co. They're there, it's not disputed. And these are the applications we were able to get with the first quick grab through Open Records Act. It's not the, the deep dive that I was trying to get accomplished last month and, and the weeks leading up to tonight, where I could show you, I am certain, hundreds upon hundreds of retail outlets of all variety, that listed nothing more than a brief line. How do I know that? Because, guess what? We have clients all over the state, and many lawyers do, and they fill this out the same way. It's, it, you know- It's, you know, what do you do if you're Walmart and three and a half inches? You say retail product line. You just say retail products. And the point of the motion is that it seems that when this store opened, you know, I've got friends and family in East Cobb and all around Cobb, they, people got, a few people got upset. I say a few, I know it's more than a few, but it's, I promise you, it's a vocal minority. And, and they got the attention of the licensing department, and now they've come in and said, we're going to revoke your license forever because you didn't fill out this form correctly. They did fill it out correctly, and to the extent that the county's saying otherwise tonight, that is an equal protection violation. Mr. Burkhild is right to allude to it, and I think we're being deprived of a chance to really air it out because we're being forced here, even though we didn't get our open records fulfilled. Keeping on with this motion, it really is, by and large, an equal protection argument. Page, if I don't voice it here tonight, it's still in the motion. I just don't want to make your ears bleed. I think we'll get to it in another motion, but, you know, Mr. Aaronson, the corporate attorney out of Florida for this store, told the county on August 28th exactly what the store was selling. Earlier, there was, there was, it was, there was no dispute from the store. Once you come to the store and ask for stuff, it's been provided. But I feel like, I know, we're being treated differently than other businesses that don't upset the public based on their, their speech, the type of media that they sell. So that's, that's the gist of that motion. The attachments, even though they're long, I didn't want to lead, they're business license applications, we didn't, on some of them, we didn't include the, some of the material at the end, but those are fairly complete, and they show the parts that we need to show. The next motion...
If we will, if we're going to handle them one at a time, if we allow Mr. Burkhild then to respond to that motion, and then the board can take up that first motion.
Sure.
Okay, so what, just to make sure we're clear about the motion.
It's the thick one.
C45(c)(2) and grounds under Section c45(c)(4) as they violate response, equal protection, correct? That's the motion we're discussing right now?
Yes, Chair.
All right. I just want to make sure, because I have some questions. Commissioner Otte.
Did you want...
Yes, I do want to respond.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me...
Are you okay with...
Yes, he should be able to respond to some of the argument at this point in time, so...
So as, as often the case in these Tokyo Valentino cases, the argument is, is a misdirection. It's irrelevant. They didn't have a suspension letter sent to them because they didn't give enough detail. They had a suspension letter given to them because they purposely failed to disclose. And I think, I think Mr. Wiggins' comment at the outset of the hearing said it right. He said, "We have a right to misrepresent. We have a right to make misrepresentations about our application." And then he said, just now, in the June 10 letter from Danny Aaronson, the other lawyer for this outfit out of Florida, that "we told you exactly what we were going to sell." Well, there's two problems with that. Number one, you didn't tell us exactly what you were going to sell on March 6th, when you submitted the application, and in fact, you affirmatively excluded three, the three largest categories of what you were going to sell, regardless of whether it's treated as adult under the former ordinance or not, and that's a, that's a debate that we could have, but what's relevant here under Chapter 78 and specifically the occupation tax code is that they submitted false information because they failed to give a full description of what they were doing. Seventy percent of their income, or seventy percent of their inventory in floor spaces is sexual devices, and that's nowhere listed here. So there's no theory under which they could say that, oh, we just felt a little shy and we didn't give enough detail, because they specifically excluded what they always intended to tell us two days after they got open in their June 10 letter. So don't be misdirected by the argument that this was some, you know, some insufficiency. Secondly, as to, you know, what other businesses have done, we don't have any reason to believe that Bed Bath &amp; Body went and did something that was contrary or totally outside the scope of what they did list. What they listed was retail, clothing, undergarments, shoes, games, et cetera. And what the record shows from their own evidence and documents is that they excluded, none of those items cover the 70% of the inventory or the 78% of the cost of the inventory. So there's no doubt here that they affirmatively excluded it, even if you don't deal with all the other lies that Mr. Morrison told to the paper and that are in the record. So there's no equal protection here, because an equal protection claim is always based on a simple principle. Are those people in the same situation? Are the, are you treating like circumstances alike? And in the case law, to make an equal protection claim, you have to show that the, those two situations are materially identical in every respect, or identical in every material respect. And he just doesn't have evidence from Bed Bath &amp; Body or these other stores that they said X and did Y. And that's what we're dealing with here, and that's why they got the letter, because under the business license code, he may say it's not material, but the business license code says, "If you submitted false information to the supervisor of the business license office, that's material," because it's ground for revocation. So that's the business license response to the first motion.
Let me quickly respond, just briefly. When I opened up, I said that, that the business, and certainly Mr. Morrison has a First Amendment right to not be truthful with the press. Now, I didn't say with the county. They need to be completely above the board and straightforward with the county. That's why Mr. Morrison or the business 1290 Clothing Co., in this case, fly specked the ordinance and made sure that there were no material misrepresentations on the application. This is not rocket surgery. The application is two pages, and it asks for a full description of your, of a detailed description.
Mr. Chairman, I got a joke there.
We've covered that. It, it doesn't ask for your dominant line, which is a term of art, which is defined in the ordinance. Had it done so, suppose they would have made an educated guess on what their dominant product line would be, right? Because this is a brand-new business. Things change. You know, you open up and you add inventory, as Mr. Aaronson's letter alludes to, June 10 letter. So things change. It's not, it's not material, because before this hearing started, I asked the county attorney, you know, Mr. Burkhild, I think he's going to be representing, he drafted the ordinance in September, that was adopted in September this year. He drafted it. He was, I assume the county's paid him to draft it, and I'm assuming it was approved. I don't know how it works here, but I, I don't know if the board plays a role in approving or hiring, but, so I'm...
I object.
Hold on, but now I'm being...
I object to Mr. Wiggins saying that it's not at all what he asked me, that it's not at all what I responded to.
And in addition...
Mr. Chairman, we need to... I think you're in safer grounds by not talking about the county process.
All right, all right. What I'm, I'm not trying to speak a word, but the reason I'm saying that is because it is about materiality, right? It's about materiality, and if I'm being told, or if my client is being told, that because it didn't list lubes and lotions in the list with lingerie, I don't have it in front of me, or toys in this list, and that's material, I need to know how and why. And I think they're going to go back and talk about the ordinance. That's, that's the problem. Because I know what the ordinance said before September of this year, and I know what it was changed to in September this year, drastic change. There's no question the new ordinance would cover the toys that my client is selling. The old ordinance did not, okay?
We're not evaluating, we're not evaluating against the new ordinance.
I understand.
It's against the old, right?
But we are evaluating materiality, and what I'm getting to is, if I list, look, forgetting about Target, Walmart, and all these other stores that just say retail products, let's just set them aside for a second. Let's just say that in addition to the items listed here, instead of saying, and other miscellaneous, they did say, and lotions and lubes, and sex toys, that, as sexual devices, excuse me, that wouldn't change anything. It wouldn't be illegal. And so if it's not illegal, why is, why is that description any different from the one that's provided? And it doesn't change anything, to your point, Chair, Commissioner Otte, it, I don't, I don't think it changes the taxation. It doesn't change anything.
Mr. Chairman.
Your Honor...
All right. So we have a, we're going to have a motion from Commissioner Otte, and we're going to discuss it among the board, all right?
All right. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to say why I'm going to make the motion I'm going to make, or do you want me to make the motion first?
Make the motion, then we'll just talk about it, all right?
All right. I make a motion to reject the motion to dismiss grounds under 7845(c)(2) and grounds under Section 7845(c)(4) as they violate response, is equal protection. That's my motion.
Okay, so I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay. Your statements, you said that you, it is the responsibility of the business license division to know what a business is going to do. But you also say that you don't have to list the dominant items. Well, we just heard that you do have to list the dominant items. I mean, we had a case in the county, we've had numerous cases actually, talking about equal protection. The county requires a certain percentage of food to be sold with an alcohol license. The county has prosecuted or revoked alcohol licenses and business licenses for businesses that falsify what they sell by selling crackers.
Okay.
Okay? That doesn't count for food. And so to say, to put the burden on the business license division, but then say that you don't have to list everything you're going to sell, when we hear that it can change from one category to the other, or it can change what type of business you are, or whether or not you need another license, you can't have it both ways. And so I think that the arguments made in here, and the other thing is, all these other businesses in here, there's no proof in here that they lied or didn't list everything. And so I just think that you do not make the case that you're not being treated equally. So that's my rationale.
Okay. Any comments on the board?
The document that addresses equal protection under the law, can you provide which document out of the floor that is to the attorney? The equal protection document?
Yes, Ms. Cupid.
It's a large package.
Right.
And do you define in here what equal protection is? Or are you just generalizing equal protection that they're not being treated the same?
Yeah, we're, we're saying it's selective enforcement.
Okay.
Yeah, it's selective enforcement.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is, there's a lot of dense information that's being addressed here tonight, and I'm doing my best to try to follow and follow arguments on both sides. Another clarifying question I have is perhaps the point that you are addressing where it states a full description?
Mm-hmm.
And then I believe the argument you're making is that some of the full descriptions have general descriptions versus detailed description.
That's right.
Okay.
I know your motion's on the floor. Am I allowed to talk while you're doing that?
Hey, can I respond to your question? Sure.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it just, that, that's it. I mean, like, for example, the Five Below Inc., which is Five Below, they just list all items under $5, but that could be sexual devices, of course. It could be anything. It's not, you know, and that's fine. I don't really have a problem with that. I have a problem with it being selectively enforced here. That's, that's what the equal protection problem is.
All right.
And Commissioner, can I respond to that, to your question on that point? Even if it's a broader description, that's different than coming and doing, when you enumerate certain items or categories of items, but then you go in and you do a store that's 70%, none of those items. No one made them put on their application what they chose to disclose, but they affirmatively said one thing, and they cabined the scope of what they said they were going to do, and then they did something that was way beyond it. And, and as far as the idea that the business license office would have to discern and to properly classify it, well, they can only do that based on the information you supply. And if you're saying you have a right to lie, or to misrepresent, or to fail to disclose what 70% of your inventory is, then you can never impose a burden on business licensing. Ultimately, the applicant has to be honest, so we classify them right.
I hear you.
And, and that code, by the way, has never changed. This ordinance that we're proceeding under has never been changed in the last decade, to my knowledge. So it's not, we're not talking about a change in codes or anything like that.
Those are all my questions I have under the equal protection document.
Okay. Commissioner Gabriel?
Yes, I have one, and actually, Ms. Webb will probably to answer this. But when a business license is filled out, I'm assuming there's an inspection that happens? Someone goes in to inspect the business to ensure that they're conducting business as set on the license?
Not on an occupation tax certificate, no matter.
Okay. It, do they go if there's a complaint filed?
If a complaint is filed, we will address it or research it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So if a complaint had been set on any of these that are included in this document, you would have gone and, and done an inspection?
We may not have necessarily inspected it, but we would have certainly done our research to determine what they, or how they were operating, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Hearing done. I'm going to call a question. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Okay, your next motion, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is the motion to dismiss grounds under Section 78-45(c)(5). And this is the, of course, this is the grounds that the five newspaper articles and then the reference to Ms. Hughley rely on, that's, this is a subsection, I should say. And the subsection, which, you know, one thing I can say about ordinance is that limit free speech is they just don't age well, and that's not, that's not your fault, or my fault, or my client's fault. That's just the way it is. And this one is, is right there. It is, it is saying, it says, let's start out, subsection c5 says, "The applicant or licensee during the 12 months next proceeding has engaged in misrepresentation of facts, whether through advertisement or through any form of direct communication, oral or written, which is intended to mislead the public or any party with whom the licensee deals in pursuant of the licensed business." And it goes on to provide an illustration of the Fair Business Practices Act. The, I'll just direct your attention to the first four words of this subsection, "The applicant or licensee." The applicant, of course, is 1290 Clothing Co. That's the LLC. If you want to treat it as Ms. Hughley, since she filled out the application, you may do that as well. Applicant's an undefined term. It's not defined in your ordinance, certainly not defined on the application. Or licensee, that's certainly not Mr. Morrison, okay? It may be 1290, since they were issued an OTC or a business license. But what you have here is sort of a string of assumptions and a complete lack of proof that would say that Michael Morrison is, in fact, the applicant or the licensee, or he's, he's, he's the true face of that. And then based on that, five, five news articles, which are rank hearsay, I understand this is not a court of law, but I have great respect for this commission, definitely feel that you're trying to probe the issues and get it right. Well, let me help you. That's not, you, you don't suspend a license because the East Cobb News calls you up on fear that you might be opening a Tokyo Valentino, or a toy store, or some kind of store that you just don't want near your house. What I was telling you is Mr. Morrison has every right, as an individual, and, you know, as somebody, even as a business person, has a right to not give the paper a straight answer. You and I might disagree whether that's good policy, a good marketing, a bad marketing, but the case, and I'll get to that in a moment, but he, the U.S. Supreme Court has even said you can lie. Okay? You can lie. No, honey, you do not look fat in that, in those pants. You are allowed to lie. And, and here, the, I was disappointed, when I read the due cause letter or show cause letter, all of it, I, I realized the neighborhood's upset, and so we're going to... all of it, I realized the neighborhood's upset, and so we're going to, we're going to throw a bunch of spaghetti at the wall and see what happens, but this is, this is terrible. And no, you didn't bring the reporter in, you didn't, you know, we didn't talk to, if they got the quotes right. And even if they did, I guess it's a big, it doesn't matter. One thing, I was looking at the articles, page 18 of the city's, or excuse me, the county's exhibit 11, that's the AJC article. Mr. Morrison is quoted as saying, "It might be a clothing store, it might be a Tokyo store, we just don't know. Everybody has jumped the gun on this, and all I can say is whatever is legal and compliant is what we're going to put there. We haven't broken any law, and we don't intend to." How about that? How about, how about that be a centerpiece in the letter? He's not interested in breaking the law, it costs, I cost money to him, his reputation to you costs, is intangible damage. This business, it, there's a reason people go to it, it's a good business, it's a clean business, I'm not going to get into the particulars now, but he's not interested in violating the law, and to hold these newspaper quotes against him is just improper. So this motion is really saying, you know, who, who did he mislead? The reporter for the East Cop News? Well, good. Good. Because maybe that reporter's just interested in fanning the flame, and drawing, you know, comments to the website, I don't know. But there are plenty of reasons why business might not want to divulge exactly what's going up. I think the Braves Stadium was built that way, if I'm not mistaken, so, you know, that's the main argument. The sixth allegation has to do with Ms. Hughley being misled, she was not here, that's a string of assumptions based on some emails, yeah, she wanted, she, there was a business dispute, that's clear in the email, she wanted her name off the license. That's not grounds for revoking somebody's business license, it's just not. It happens all the time. And I know some members of the board are attorneys, you got to know, there are business divorces all the time, and we don't go and revoke their business license because they got in a spat. So that's, that's the gist of this motion.
I would like the business license to respond to.
Yes, sure. If I could, so three things, let's talk about Ms. Hughley first. It might be common to have business splits, and for partners to fight and squabble over assets and so forth. What's not common is for someone to go out and apply for a business license, and then come back and say, "I have pleaded with my partners to do the right thing, or to make changes," that was her own email, that's a certified document, part of the business license file, "and that they should get a proper license for the business they're doing there." In other words, the person who filed the application apparently thought it was going to be something, and then she said, "I'm out, I want my name off," and they ought to go get the proper kind of license. That's not common. The fact that you have business splits isn't a relevant issue, that's not common. The second thing is with regard to 1290 Clothing Co. LLC, LLCs don't speak. They speak through human beings, natural persons, who serve as their members or their managing members. And in this case, Michael Morrison is the only member listed, the only manager or member listed on the Secretary of State documents that are in the record before you tonight. So when he spoke, he's speaking on behalf of 1290 Clothing Co. LLC, the applicant slash licensee. There's no doubt about that culpability or the responsibility that he takes when he speaks on behalf of the entity that he's the managing member of. Last point. Bring Michael Morrison here, he thinks it's so fair, he recognizes that we can have, you know, hearsay and public records that are exceptional to the hearsay document, but he's known now for, since September 8th, that this meeting was going to be either September 22nd, and then when we continued it a full month for him, at his request, to October 22nd, October 27th, he had all the time in the world, Mr. Morrison could come, this was his due cause hearing, this was his opportunity to come and speak and to say, "The paper didn't quote me right," or "That's not what I said," or "Let me tell you how the machinations occurred so that we went from being an electronic dance wear company, of which we have no other stores like that, to being the Tokyo that we said we weren't going to be." So he had many opportunities, and tonight was one, and I wasn't surprised that Mr. Morrison wasn't here. But it's not because he didn't have an opportunity to get up and take the stand, take an oath and tell you what's going on.
If I may briefly respond.
Sure.
I was going to object, I didn't want to disrupt Mr. Berthold, but that's improper, the burden is on the county tonight. And to hold this business somehow liable under your ordinances because Mr. Morrison's not here flips the burden of proof. It's their burden, I haven't seen any documents, certainly didn't hear a witness, that would say that Michael Morrison holds an ownership interest in 1290, he's not a managing member, I haven't heard that, I know he's not. He is listed by the Secretary of State under your exhibit as the organizer, that's fine, an attorney organizer, I have organized hundreds of corporate, that doesn't mean anything, legally speaking. And he's also listed as a manager, not managing member, as a manager. It's a toggle-down menu, I don't want, I know, Chairman, you told me we could talk about Secretary of State, but the point is, is that's, there's a series of assumptions being made here. He's not, he doesn't hold an ownership interest in this company, and they have not put up, the county hasn't put up any proof that he does.
In response to that, real quickly, he doesn't have to be an owner, he's a manager, he's the only one. Finally, when he speaks to the paper, all these different publications, he knows that that's going to result in an article, that's going to be published, that's going to be read by the public. Clear intent to mislead. And so I think you should reject the motion.
Okay, I'm going to have Commissioner out, carry this motion to.
All right, I'm going to make the motion, then I'm going to tell you why. I make a motion to reject the motion to dismiss grounds under Section 78-45(c)(5).
A second for discussion purposes.
All right. So in that section, it says, "The applicant or licensee during the 12 months next proceeding has engaged in misrepresentation of facts, whether through advertisement or through any form of direct communications, or oral written, which is intended to mislead the public or any party." Everyone in the county is not an attorney. And when I go to the Secretary of State's webpage, and I look to see who the manager or the agent or whatever, and I see, and I'm referring to your document, like, did I read the wrong one? I did. You referenced the fact that he is also listed as the manager of each, oh, no, it's, all right, hold on. It says, "In January 2020, Morrison," this is number two in the county's charges, "that Morrison registered 1290 Clothing Company LLC with Georgia Secretary of State, signing the articles of organization as manager, listing his own address as the address of 1290 Clothing Principal Office address, using the same registered agent as," and it lists the other stores, okay? So to me, doing that with it being the exact same listing for all the other stores as a member of the public, if I were to look at that, and then I were to look at the business application and see a different name, in my mind, that is misrepresenting or trying to hide, to me, as a public, a member of the public, as to what the intention of the business is. So that is why I believe that number five in 78-45(c)(5), number two, and I don't, the newspaper articles, I don't believe everything I read in the newspaper, so whether or not Mr. Morrison, or whoever, said whatever they said in the newspaper, I don't know if that's the truth or not. But what I do know is what's on the Secretary of State's webpage, and what's on the application. And in my opinion, those are misrepresentation to the public, because that is all public information. This is not a rebuttal. See, you get ready to say something. So, Mr. Chairman, my rationale is that the public documents at the Secretary of State's office, and the application to the county are misrepresentations to the public, because those are public documents. They are not discussions between vendor and business owner or business partners, those are public documents, and it, to me, is misrepresentation to the public.
Any other comments on the board? Commissioner Cupid?
Yeah, just to clarify that argument, it's not necessary that there be a misrepresentation to the public, because it has the term "or" in it, that, or any party with whom the license deals, so it could be just any employee of the county. Again, I'm trying to piece together all of this, and some things are more clear than others. If there's anything that concerns me, I guess, is part of the last argument and this one here, and it's an argument I think that commissioners are making, is that, was there an intent to mislead, in a sense, when you don't list the core business? And I know that you've argued the point that a full description isn't necessary, but if your primary business is in something that you don't include in a laundry list of things that appear to be exhaustive, you know, it makes me perceive that there is some desire to mislead. I can't perceive why there would be such a grave omission, and if you can help me understand it, it's difficult for me not to perceive there was some malintent with that.
Yes, Commissioner Cupid, if I may, that is the elephant in the room, and I would, I think that, again, and I'm not speaking about what I advise this client on this application, speaking generally, but I would tell every client in the similar situation, you need to flyspec the ordinances and flyspec the application, and make darn sure that you do not say anything that's untruthful, don't lie by omission, which is the inverse of that, right? But answer the question, answer it. And I'm certain, and I don't want to rehash it, the description of the business, we've gone over that, I think they did that right, I think, the suggestion from the city, the county's attorney said, well, they started a list, so they had to go with it, that's not, that's not true, that's just not true. And Georgia law would abhor this forfeiture for that very reason, I won't get into that for a moment. Back to this one with the, you mentioned, Commissioner Cupid, that the ordinance does have the conjunction "or" in there, so it could be not just misleading the public, but could also be misleading any party with whom the licensee deals in pursuant of the licensed business, which is another way of saying the public and then some, right? Because the reference is to Ms. Hughley. The Secretary of State, there's nothing, there's nothing untruthful that the county's provided about the Secretary of State, he's the organizer, the...
And that's not what I'm getting, and I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, no, go right ahead.
I just don't want you to try to appeal to me on something that I've said, when that's not really what I'm making... And my concern is less to do with the Secretary of State, and I guess maybe this is more directed to Commissioner, that if I saw substantiation of c5, it is potentially on the grounds that, when that list was stated, to me, was that some misrepresentation of how the business intended to operate here, when, you know, it looks as if they're trying to make a list of what they intend to do, and what they actually did do is something that was omitted from a list that it was fully in their, you know, in their purview to come up with that list. It's hard to believe that they did not have some intent to be deceptive on that list.
And I don't necessarily disagree, I don't disagree with that at all. I was just, you know, I wouldn't expect that all five of us would necessarily look at it exactly the same, but I mean, I agree with all of your comments about that.
Yeah, so, if I, when I support your motion, that's probably where I'm hanging my hat in, is that I just can't, I cannot grasp why the core of their business was omitted from a list of activity.
Commissioner Burrell?
No, ma'am, I'm done. Well, I feel that there is evidence of misrepresentation. When I see 1290 Clothing in retail, I never heard of Tokyo Valentino, and I think, you know, that has a totally different connotation than 1290 retail. And the fact that, that there was not disclosure of what is actually being sold, or the primary basis for the business, is misrepresentation or, and not full disclosure.
Commissioner Gabriel?
I have a question, or, Ms. Webb. If a business makes an error on their OTC, can they come back in and correct it?
If they add activity to their business, yes.
So they can...
It may change, the end result of what they're classified as, but yes.
But they can come in and amend their application?
They can follow change, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Wiggins, did your client amend his application once he became aware that there was a problem?
Commissioner, is it Gabriel? Yes, the attorney for the business, Mr. Aronson, wrote a detailed letter to the Business License Department explaining, let me rewind, this notice is the first time that we, when I say "we," 1290 Clothing Company, the September 8th notice from the county is the first time that we got notice that there was an issue with the application, the initial March application being incorrect.
And I remember you showed us a letter from Mrs. Hughley...
Yes.
...stating that she wanted to be removed, I believe that was back in August?
Yes, it was in August.
It was in August. So my question to you is, you knew that you had a partner or managing principal owner that wanted to be removed from the business license, why didn't you correct that back in August, when she made that known to you?
Well, they, they were taking all the steps that they could to correct it, to fix it. And the exhibit eight that the county's provided to you, this August 28th letter from Mr. Aronson details all the, along with it, we're the ones that provided this spreadsheet, all this information, everything was provided to the county. In addition to, I mean, changing, it's hard to answer that question, I mean, everything here, if I could put everything here under the header of materiality, because whether, you know, it's, you know, these news applications, these news stories, and I'm going to come right back to you, but the news stories that say, you know, "Mr. Morrison said, quote, 'Not even close to possible,' unquote, that I'm affiliated with this business," how's that material? How is that material? I mean, how is that material, you know, if, if somebody is an investor in, you know, a business in the Battery Park outside the Braves Stadium, and the press asks him or her...
Chairman, I'm sorry, but currently, he hasn't answered the question, Commissioner Gabriel is back before the board on a sitting motion, it's up to y'all to decide the motion and to move forward.
Well, he's responding to her question.
I'm trying to, thank you, Bill. I'll get to it, but it's not material if, if the company tells the newspaper, no, he's, you know, he's not involved, or she's not involved, it's just, it's not material, I don't know how it changes anything of whether that company can or cannot be operating in the Battery. To your question, on June 10th, the attorney sent a letter for 1290 to the county, and again on August 28th, and we've, it's just been a back and forth conversation, the September 8th letter, I'll be very candid, it kind of hit us, you know, it kind of hit us out of the field. And, yes, I mean, do we want to change the licensee, we gladly do that. There's nothing below the board with approaching and saying, "We'd like to swap in, for example, Mr. Naup for Ms. Hughley." There's no problem with that. But to answer your question, this September 8th letter is a first notice, and we haven't had an opportunity to do, to do that, we're working to save our business life here.
Commissioner Gabriel, if I can answer that question as well, it was a clear bait and switch, they waited until after they got open, sent all the stuff that now makes up 70%, 78% of their store, and they never filed an amendment. up 70%, 78% of their store, and they never filed an amended application. They never filed a new application with full disclosure of what they would need to give to accurate description and the dominant line of their business. They did not do that.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and call a question. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Passes 5 to 0. Okay, sir, your next motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think it's the last motion. If this is the fourth motion, it is the last motion.
Ms. Rowland.
This is the one on the violation of First Amendment?
Yes, yes, sir.
We've only done six.
This is our third one.
That's our third one, okay.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
Yeah, there's four. Yep, you haven't done this.
Well, we handled, the first, the first one actually had two parts, okay? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay, all right, all right, hold on. So now, do you want to do the First Amendment one or the one to 7845 denial suspension revocation of license to be unconstitutional? Which one do you want to do?
Let's do the motion to declare 7845 denial suspension to be unconstitutional.
Okay, all right.
I lost track, I feel like I'm back at a high school dance, I heard so many denials. So, let's see, some levity at 11:30, right?
Not me. No, we're doing the motion to declare Section 7845 denial suspension revocation of license to be unconstitutional in violation of due process clause of both the United States Constitution, 14th Amendment, and parallel provisions of the Georgia Constitution, to which I would ask the county attorney, do we have the capability of this board, given that it's an administrative hearing, to rule on a constitutional issue?
You wouldn't, but to the extent he's raising the grounds related, statutorily, you'd be able to rule on that, correct? And all he needs to do to appeal, all he needs to-
He's asserting that what we're doing is unconstitutional, okay?
Correct.
So do we, look, this is an administrative board, all right? This is not a judicial board. So what you're asking is for us to make a constitutional ruling on something that I don't believe this board is charged to do.
Make it easy.
Your honor, I would agree with that. He has the duty to raise it in the administrative hearing, he's certainly done that by submitting the motion in paper, but I don't think it's within the purview of this body to rule on the constitutionality of a code section, which is what this asked for. So I think he's arguing for something that he wants to preserve for Superior Court or federal court, but it's not within the purview of the board to rule on it. It's my understanding of the case.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
And it's actually the next two motions, the next one's violation of the First Amendment, which would be the same thing. Well, I'll make a motion on this one, that we reject the motion to declare Section 7845 denial suspension revocation of license to be unconstitutional in violation of due process clause of both United States Constitution, 14th Amendment, and the parallel provisions of the George Constitution, due to the fact that this board does not have jurisdiction on those. Is that the right word, Bill? Jurisdiction?
Well, before we go any farther, though, I need to hear something from the county attorney. I want to make sure that, you know, you're here tonight, and I want to make sure you get your hearing, and we don't want to do something here where we could have done something and we decided we didn't want to do it, right?
Chairman, generally-
That doesn't give us permission, but my concern goes back to, this is, to me, appears to be a judicial question. And this board is not, does not assign the responsibility of addressing judicial matters.
All a party has to do is raise constitutional claims in order to exhaust their administrative remedies and preserve their claims for a judicial review. The Board of Commissioners, like other administrative agencies, has no authority to actually rule on the constitutional claims. There's no requirement for the board to rule on the raised constitutional claims to preserve them.
Right, so you have my motion.
Well, I'm not even sure it'd be your motion, I think the action is moot.
Well, and I think the motion is to reject them, so it would be the same.
Okay, if you, just so you can have, so he can have a legal, let me finish here, okay? What we need to do here is, is that I think in order to have a clear path forward for both sides, we need to accept the motion, all right? And I'll accept, I'll second it, but that still involves discussion, okay? So I want to hear from the board.
I believe I'll second it.
I already seconded the motion, I just want to hear, any, any motion requires a discussion.
Okay, the discussion would be that the motion to reject would be on the basis that this board doesn't have the authority to act on unconstitutionality of the, of his motion.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid?
And that would be the, what I would support.
Similarly, yes, because I'm not authorized to rule on matters of constitution.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, we have a second, a discussion, I'm going to call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand.
And did you amend the motion to say that?
He did, that was the original motion.
That was the original motion.
All right, so it passes 5 to 0. All right, sir, now we're going to go on to motion to dismiss for violation of First Amendment.
I don't think we can rule on that either.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would yield to the county attorney, but I don't think we can rule on that either. We're being asked to rule on the First Amendment, which we-
It's correct, it's the same, it's the same issue.
So I make a similar motion that, to reject the motion to dismiss violation of First Amendment.
Because?
Because this body does not have jurisdiction to rule on a constitutional, constitutionality of a code section.
Okay, all right, I'll second that. So any other discussion? Okay, I'll call a question, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, passes 5 to 0. All right, so that takes care of the administrative portion of where we are right now. Now I believe-
Unless Mr. Wiggins has any other evidence.
Well, as far as addressing his motions, okay? But now we need to hear closing arguments.
Well, correct, I'm just checking with Mr. Wiggins, if he had any evidence he wanted to submit for the record.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rowling. No, I think, I think argument's fine. Thank you, and I appreciate your flexibility, everyone.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wiggins. So, yes, please.
I think it's closing.
Yes, right.
Chairman, boys, members of the board, on behalf of the Business License Division, we ask that you would rule via motion to affirm the decision of the Business License Office Supervisor, which was a suspension decision, and therefore to revoke the occupation tax certificate number 0CC27788 for all of the grounds laid out in the letter dated September 8th, the charges specifically threefold. One, under Section 78-75C2, because the licensee has supplied false information to the supervisor of the Business License Office. Two, under Section 78-45C4, because the licensee has failed to comply with the provisions of Chapter 78 by failing to have a valid occupation tax certificate for its principal activity or dominant line of business. And three, under Section 78-45C5, because the licensee during the previous 12 months has engaged in misrepresentation of facts, which is intended to mislead the public or any party with whom the licensee deals in pursuance of the licensed businesses. All the particulars are set forth in the September 8th charging letter, and all the documents that have been tendered, which are Exhibits 1 through 17, I'm not going to renew any request to consider Number 18, provide the more than substantial evidence to demonstrate and to validate each of those charges. And so we ask that you would affirm and revoke it. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Get it done before midnight.
Well, that works, no, we still have to hear-
Closing.
We still have to get closing, absolutely.
I thought he'd already done his closing.
Absolutely, no, he's, he's entitled to his comments and-
I'll try to be-
Take all the time you need.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I mean that, you take all the time you need.
Absolutely. So I hear the three grounds, the county's urging, C2, false information, C4, not a valid OTC for the principal activity, and the last one is misleading the public. None of those grounds are valid for taking away somebody's rice bowl, somebody's business. It's not, it's not the type of business maybe the six of us would, would open, but it's lawful. It is, and they have rights, statutory, ordinance, and constitutional, most importantly, the constitutional rights. False information, it has to be material. If he says his name's Miguel, but it's really Michael, but then he gives you his social, his address, and everything else, and you look it up and you're like, he said Miguel, it's Michael. That's not a material misrepresentation, doesn't change anything. It's still a business there, it's still brick and mortar, they still have to get sprinkled and fire inspections and all planning review, and it's just not material that it's Miguel, not Michael. Here, and that might sound like hyperbole when I use that comparison, but it's really not, because the false information, well, the misleading the public, and we start from the back and work forward, is all about Michael not being involved. Michael, Michael told the East Cobb News or the Marietta Daily Journal, he said he wasn't involved. He said he doesn't know what it's going to be. He might, you know, but then a day later, he said he did know what it's going to be, but all he, you know, and then I read to you the excerpt from the AJC where he said, whatever it's going to be, people, leave me alone, it's going to be lawful. And five newspaper clips, can you imagine? Do any of you own a business, or a family friend, or a son, or a daughter, or somebody? Would they come to you and say, hey, you, you're a county commissioner, you have some legal expertise, you're a lawyer, whatever? Tell me if this is right, I told the newspaper I didn't know when my store was opening, or I was only paying eight grand a month on a lease when I should, when I was really paying 10 grand a month, that's a lie, am I going to lose my business? You would laugh. You'd say, no, I'll hire you an average lawyer, and you will keep your business. I don't even need a lawyer, let's just go and tell them it's not material, because that's the fact. It's not material. That is the theme I want you, I want to keep on this record. No valid business license for the principal activity. What does it change? I didn't hear anything, I didn't hear any testimony, I didn't even hear any argument. What would change? The county inspected this business, I know they don't inspect it in the process of issuing the business license, they certainly inspected it after, and the county adopted a new law changing, you know, adult entertainment in the county. What would it change? What would it change? Why, why is the OTC they have that they applied for and that they obtained up until September 8th of this year, whenever the ordinance was changed, why wasn't it the proper OTC for the principal activity? Why not? And the false information, C2, again, has to be material. I heard that the trade name was incorrect. I promise you, if we were to go through the scores and reams and reams of business license applications, we'd find plenty, a significant percentage, where people either leave that, the DBA blank, blank, no answer, or they put in the corporate name, or some variation thereof, or a name that's been changed. It doesn't make it a material misrepresentation to the county. And I think, and I was getting to what Commissioner Cupid and maybe, well, all of you, were wondering, which is maybe the elephant in the room, why, you know, why, why does, why didn't they come, fill out the application and just say, you know, line of business, sex toys, sex toys and lubes, or lotions, or whatever the 70% is comprised? That would be perfectly lawful for that business to have opened and list those items. But number one, when it applied for the OTC, that was not what is, that's not what it was in there, that was not what was in there. That came on June 10th from the letter, the corporate attorney in Florida, that's Exhibit 5 and the exhibits that the county presented. But number two, maybe it is, I could envision somebody saying that that's illegal and trying not to issue the license. I don't, I'm not saying that happened here, but I could see why that wouldn't, you know, someone might not list sex toys. But the good news, and the moral dilemma is resolved, because your ordinance and the application didn't require it. That's, that's getting back to the materiality. Again, I've said it repeatedly, the full description of the business is not the same thing as dominant line. And, you know, under Georgia law, and one thing Georgia law is really good on is property rights, and there's some nasty history for why, but it's good on property rights. And, you know, when there's some ambiguity in the ordinance or in the law, in the application in this case, if there's another way to interpret it, one that saves the property of the private individual, and one that requires a forfeiture, like a license revocation, you have to go with the one that saves the property. And I would submit, at the very least, there's ambiguity on the application when it asks to list a detailed, your detailed inventory, a detailed description of your business. I'm not wrong on that. And I mean, we, the county may not like the answer, the residents that are complaining may not like the answer, but just as Walmart and Target and everyone else lists themselves as retail, my client had every right to truthfully list himself as retail merchandise. Those are, and I know, I respect that you couldn't rule on the constitutional questions, and I agree with Mr. Berthold and Mr. Rowling, I just need to raise them here to, for procedural reasons. But, you know, the misrepresentation in the newspaper, your ordinance doesn't say anything about material misrepresentation, it just says misrepresentation. And that's, that is one of the several items in that ordinance that make it what's called overbroad in Chills' speech. And I don't think it's proper to revoke anyone's business license on that, not just my client, I would hate to see Cobb County revoking business licenses, because they don't like, some neighbor complained about something someone affiliated with the business said to the reporter, which we don't think is true, when they had a first memorite to lie, that's what I'm telling you, but forget that, even if the person was, so what do we, what does the ordinance mean? Only pure 100% truthful things can be said? And not even knowing who, I don't know, the reporter, what if the reporter wasn't with the Marietta or Cobb County, what if the reporter was with, you know, I don't know, Raven County? What does that have to do with any, why is that material? We get back to, we just, we don't like the business, and we're going to see if there's a way we can get them, let's get them on material omission. Material omission. You go to apply for a job as a bus driver, you leave off that you've got three DUIs, right? Where it asks you, have you ever been charged with a traffic violation or misdemeanor? And you leave it off, that's a material omission, right? These guys are, my client, they're sophisticated, I always tell people, they don't need me, they can read the ordinances themselves and educate me on stuff, I can, you know, but they can fill out these applications, they know the ground rules, tell the truth. And here, in a very perverse way, and I'll leave it, I'm going longer than I thought I would, you know, the allusions, for example, to listing items and then not completing them, or listing the dominant line within the items, that it's being used against them, like, you know what I mean? It's, it's, you know, in the law, there's something called the rescuer doctrine, you see someone drowning, and then you go try to save them, and you're negligent in trying to save them, you might get sued. Or you can just let them drown and walk away, at least you won't get sued. You know, here, the client did its best, within the bounds of the law, your ordinances and the constitution, to complete the application, because that's really what we're here for, the application and the newspaper stories. It's not right. And if you, I would, you know, you could always do something other than, you know, affirm, I'm not sure what the word is, but, you know, affirm the revocation of a license, which means the business is over, people losing their jobs in the middle of pandemic, I understand they're not everyone's cup of tea jobs, but there are jobs, people have healthcare and they have jobs. Or you could, perhaps you could say, we do think the client filled that application out, you know, could have been more clear, amend it. It wouldn't change anything, it's not, that's not material, because the business has been the same ever since, it's not, it's not any different now than it was back in June 12th of this year. So, again, I know it's very late, and I appreciate you bearing with me, I have not appeared before this board before, and I thank you for actually wanting to understand and learn about this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Rowland. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make my motion again, and then comments. So I make a motion to affirm the Business License Division manager's decision- So I make a motion to affirm the Business License Division manager's decision to suspend the Occupational Tax Certificate Number OCC Zero Two Seven Seven Eight Eight, so that Occupational Tax Certificate OCC Zero Two Seven Seven Eight Eight is permanently revoked for due cause, having shown that, number one, the licensee has supplied false information to the Supervisor of the Business License Office under Section Seventy-Eight Dash Forty-Five C Two. Number two, the licensee has failed to comply with the provisions of Chapter Seventy-Eight by failing to have a valid occupational tax certificate for the principal activity dominant, slash dominant line of business, the business. Section Seventy-Eight Dash Forty-Five C Four. And number three, the licensee during the previous twelve months has engaged in the misrepresentation of facts which is intended to mislead the public or any party with whom the licensee deals in pursuant of the licensed business, and that is Section Seventy-Eight Dash Forty-Five C Five.
I'll send it there for discussion.
Okay. Um, the three items that I included in the motion are a result of the Commissioner's comments and the decisions on the motions that were submitted, um, by Mr. Wiggins. And one of the things I, I think that you have, and I'm going out on a limb here because I'm not the attorney, and I'm liable to get it from the attorney at the other end there, but I think you're, um, kind of doing an erroneous cause and effect here, um, when you talk about the fact that the county changed the code because we have an issue with your business. The courts have ruled in DOT issues, if there's an accident and the county comes in afterwards and installs a guardrail, that is not evidence that the county was at fault for the accident. So to say that the county's change of the code, um, is a result of your business, what the courts have said, if the county acts in the normal, um, occupation of their, what they do on a daily basis, putting in guardrails, changing the code, then it is not admission or acknowledgement that there was an issue, um, like with the guardrail or the code change. This, this board regularly changes the code and it also monitors the safety of the citizens. So to imply that the code was changed simply because of your business, I think is, is an erroneous use of cause and effect. And Commissioner Cupid is probably going to, but anyway, so that's my motion.
Okay, other comments from the board members?
Well, I, I will say this, Mr. Wiggins, uh, given us food for thought, um, at least I just can't get over the fact that we had an application by somebody, um, who just sort of bowed out, and I, that just, just, as a, as a layman here, just, you know, looks at something and something just doesn't seem right here. So, um, I just, I think that's going to, that's going to require us to have, to look further into that matter also, as to Ms. Hugley. She's not here tonight, but I have a lot of questions for her. But having said all that, um, I think we've had a full hair, a full, a hearing tonight before the board members. I appreciate all of you, uh, making your input and, uh, being patient and, um, letting both sides have their full, uh, give their full airing of their, of their issues, and I believe that's what happened tonight here. So that, um, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. It passes five to zero. And with that, um, merger.